Good evening. It's seven o'clock on the dot. This open meeting of the Grafton Zoning Board of Appeals is being conducted remotely and in person, consistent with the extension of the temporary provisions relating to the open meeting law. Each vote taken in this meeting will be done by a roll call vote. This meeting is convened via Zoom video conference as posted on the meeting agenda, which can be found on the Town of Grafton website. Please see the meeting agenda for details on how to participate remotely. This meeting may feature public comment. For anyone that is attending virtually, if you would like to request acknowledgement to speak, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The meeting administrator will enable you to speak when it's your turn. For those on the phone exclusively, the AV staff will coordinate with the meeting administrator to allow you to speak. For those in person, we will ask you to step up to the podium if you're not in front of another mic to speak. And if you step up to the podium, please state your name and address prior to your comments or questions. I just want to confirm that all members can be heard. Mr. McCusker?
Present.
All right. So let's see. So I guess I'll turn it over to who's presenting for High Point.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. This is Don Bornstein. I'm attorney for the High Point Development. I believe we have Peter Hingerani and Tim Barlow on with us, as well as Patrick Garner. And I believe the board is considering tonight the minor modification to the plan to provide some additional drainage and impact Garner's with us here tonight to provide any technical information. The board may need a description of the modification. I believe he's already gone through a lengthy round of discussion with the board's peer reviewer, Sean Reardon, in advance of tonight's meeting.
So is there any, does anyone from the board have questions or comments? This is regarding the settlement agreement that was worked through in mediation.
Will we give an opinion?
Mr. Chair, could you provide some context if you'd like?
Please, Mr. Hill.
So yeah, the mediation occurred a while ago, last year. And the outcome of the mediation was that the applicant was to provide a revised drainage plan. And I'll quote from the settlement agreement. "The consulting engineer for the applicant shall provide an opinion..." I'm sorry, that's our consulting engineer. Our consulting engineer needs to review their plan, and our consulting engineer has to get to the point where he could provide an opinion to the zoning board based upon his review of the plan and supporting documentation submitted by the developer as to whether the proposed work will likely meet the zoning board's objective to control runoff around Lot 76 and to address the concerns that were discussed in our denial. So it's really, the issue is, can they produce a plan that is likely to control the runoff around Lot 76, which is the subject lot, Ms. Pecone's property, where there was evidence of flooding as a result of the site work? So the applicant has submitted a plan that proposes some swales around Lot 76 to prevent water from going onto Ms. Pecone's property. I think it'd be a good idea to have Mr. Garner provide that information to you tonight since he's here. Sean Reardon is our peer review engineer for this narrow purpose. Sean has been on the site. He was on the site as part of mediation, and he reviewed the revised plan. And he submitted a letter. Do you all have that letter?
I think I forgot to give it to him. I did email it to everybody.
I've seen it.
So Sean submitted a letter last week, end of last week, confirming that the plan is viable, but with specific recommendations for further action. So specifically, Sean is recommending that when they get to the point where they're ready to start construction, that they provide more details of how construction's going to be effectuated, and specifically, the erosion control measures that are really important because all the work is happening right against the property line. So it's very important that the work that they do not impact at all Lot 76, which they don't control. So do you want to ask Pat to maybe give an overview of what the plan entails?
I think that would be great.
Okay, this is Patrick Garner. Can you guys hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, good. So Dan Hill gave a pretty good summation of what we presented. Sean Reardon and I have gone back and forth, and I need to include Keneo Lala, who's the certifying engineer on this and has stamped the final plans. But basically, what we've done is we've proposed a shallow swale infiltration device on the common property, as well as on the lot just to the north that the trust continues to control. That's the unbuilt lot. And between those two areas, we capture all of the runoff coming on the upper hill down toward the Lot 76 property, stop it before it made its way to that property, and route it either into the ditch so that it percolates into the existing soil, which happens to be excellent at that point. We have done a number of deep holes in the area, and it's all two- to five-minute percolation material. So it's an excellent location and soil for that sort of use. And any overflow under large storm systems, large storm events, yeah, this is a good example of it. Thank you, Katrina, for sharing. So you can see the, to the east, I don't have mess control, but in the open space area, we're proposing those red lines indicate a swale infiltration area. And also on Lot 74, directly to the north up the page, we have a similar swale that would capture runoff, drive it out to High Point, driving into the storm system there. And basically, we've confirmed that the detention basin down gradient of all of this is sufficiently sized to capture this runoff. And Sean had proposed, we've gone back and forth through maybe three or four iterations of this to get to the point of what you're looking at now. But one of Sean's recommendations was that we run final hydrology for the whole system prior to construction, and Mr. Hingerani was, found that to be acceptable. But I think at this point, we're finished, basically, with the detail, and I think everybody on board is comfortable that this will take care of the concerns by the owner of Lot 76. And I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Mr. Chair, could I ask a couple of questions?
Please, Attorney Hill.
So Pat, can you just explain how the, is the swale that's on the open space parcel connected to the swale that's on Lot 74?
It is not, but there's a shallow swale that we, Sean and Tim Barlow and I walked that runs down the back of Lots 72 and 73. And what we'd be doing is connecting to that with a new grass soil and capturing everything that would come in, that would normally be running onto her property under major storm events from that area there. So in effect, what we're doing is we're catching everything coming out of the uphill area on the open space. And then she was getting some runoff out of the backs of 72 and 73, again, under very large storm events, but we'd be able to capture that as well with this new swale behind 74.
And 74, is that built?
No, that's one of the remaining unbuilt lots that Hingerani continues to control.
Okay, so even though there's a house footprint shown on that plan, that that doesn't actually exist today?
Exactly, that's proposed.
Okay, and so when you do this work, are you going to reserve an easement then across Lot 74?
Good question, Dan. We don't, we never visited that with Sean. It would be easy to do, and it wouldn't have to go through the planning board because easements don't have to, so that we could create a recordable plan that showed that on 74, and probably a 15-to-20-foot easement along the common property line between 74 and 75, as well as in the back between 74 and 76 would capture that.
Okay, and then with respect to the corner of the property where the pool house is, because I know that was a hotspot as well, where water was coming off of, like, Lots 56, I think it was, and it was creating some erosion on that side of Lot 76, so kind of where Lot 53 is and 54, actually, Katrina, could you scroll the screen up a little bit? Yeah, and maybe zoom in a little in that area? That was another area of concern. Are you proposing something new in that location? Is that a swale, I see?
Yeah, in the back of 54, there's going to be, there's a shallow sort of, I'm going to use the phrase, I guess, more casual sort of swell. You can see the red lines on that. That would be regraded and directed into the existing swell below it on Lot 53.
Okay, and what's that proposed line? I see a mark that says prop line.
That's simply the property line.
Oh, property line, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. That's not proposed, that's property.
Okay.
Good question.
All right, that's all I had.
Okay. Yeah, the infiltration swell that's on the common property, that's to the right or to the east of Lot 76, is designed to basically capture almost every major storm event. It's likely to do so through the hundred-year storm. But again, we were favored by the underlying soils, which are incredibly permeable and suitable for this sort of thing. So we anticipate that anything that, coming off that hill, that makes contact with the swell itself will simply infiltrate.
And how close will the work be to the lot line of 76?
Right now, it's proposed to be five to six feet off the Lot 76 line. We don't show any silt fence or waddles along there, but those would be a normal part of the work. We're not building anything up. We're simply excavating, and it's fairly shallow. It's about 18 inches deep, something like that. So it would be deep enough to remove the topsoil, the lume, which is not as permeable. And we'd be getting down to the subsoil so that we make contact with the sandy material. So the work itself would be fairly low-key and fairly simple to construct.
Pat, did you happen to see Sean's letter? It sounds like you guys didn't have it until this afternoon, and I sent it to Don around four o'clock. Have you seen that?
I have not seen it.
Okay, so in Sean, yeah, actually, if you could pull it up, that'd be great. It's pretty short, and Sean just had a list of recommended conditions to the board's approval if the board approves the modification tonight. So I just want to make sure you see that, and you don't see any problems with complying with those conditions.
Could that be shared?
Yeah, I'm...
Yeah, we're working on it.
Give me a sec, I'm getting there.
Did we get this today?
What?
The letter from the consult.
I thought I had emailed it to all of you guys, but...
I don't know, I haven't checked my phone all day, so. I've got it stamped in, this two days ago when I received it, and I think it may have come.
Well, it was emailed over July 14th, which was Friday, so I probably either did it Monday or Tuesday because I wasn't in the office at all Monday, it was the road work.
So if you could scroll down, Katrina, yeah, that last paragraph, I think, has the recommendations. Recommend that prior to any work being started, analysis forecasting the expected performance of the basins be provided to the zoning board. We further suggest that prior to any work being performed on the site, the developer be required to provide a detailed design of the improvements, including details of construction and demonstrating how the work will be performed without occupying or otherwise impacting property outside the developer's control, i.e. Lot 76. Pre-construction information shall require, and then it's, you know, one through five there. Do you see any issues, Pat, with those conditions?
I'm skipping them right now. No, that's all very conventional. I can't speak for Peter, though, but I don't see any technical issues with any of that.
So I imagine the way this would work is that if the board approves the closeout tonight, it would be subject to these conditions, and then it would be subject to Sean subsequently approving your final submittal, pre-construction submittal.
Yeah, that sounds totally acceptable.
So is this all just grating and not, there's no stone and pipe, in other words?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, it's grating, it's very shallow excavation, and then grassing and stabilizing the work.
Just out of curiosity, how long do you expect the work to take, or the project to take?
I don't know, I'm not qualified to talk to that, but we do have Tim Barlow, who would be supervising the work on board. Tim, do you care to comment?
I would think, yeah, I will comment. Two to three weeks from beginning to end, not working every day, and depending upon the weather.
Thanks.
Mr. McCusker raises his hand, as does Nancy Pecone.
Mr. McCusker.
Yeah, so, two questions. One, what, and this is a Dan Hill, can maybe just kind of put into context what we need to do tonight, and what that means for the big picture of, you know, the appeal, the hack, you know, et cetera, the mediation. If you could just talk to that a little bit, please.
Sure, I don't have the request in front of me. Maybe Don can share the screen and put the request up, but I believe...
Do you have it on the? No, I have it on my desk.
It's not in files?
Uh, yeah.
So if we could put, yeah, we're going to put up the formal application that the applicant filed, but my understanding is that they're looking for a closeout, and, which means that the board would then recommend that the streets be accepted by town meeting, as well as the release of the bond. In terms of the settlement, we had envisioned that once the board approves the work, the bond, you know, would be released, that the appeal, the Housing Appeals Committee would be dismissed, and then the transfer of the lots would occur to the town, as well as the monetary settlement. So it's, it's basically a certificate of completion, is what I think they're asking for, and that's the process. The zoning board is stepping into the shoes of the planning board in the typical subdivision context. So we would be issuing a certificate of completion that the infrastructure is completed, meaning that the road can then therefore be accepted by the town at town meeting, and the bond can be released.
This was his request, it was just an email.
Well, let me take a step back. We're not releasing, the work still has to be done. So the work on Lot, on the open space lot would be completed, and then the bond would be released.
So is this a provisional approval?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I guess that's what I'm struggling with, with what exactly we're doing tonight. So, because the work isn't done, so we certainly wouldn't want bonds released and things like that yet. I mean, are we just saying, yeah, this all looks good, we go ahead, and when it's all done, then they come back and we actually take an action to do that release? Yeah, I'm just struggling a little bit, Dan, with what exactly we want to do tonight. What we, maybe I should say what we need to do tonight.
The vote tonight would be to accept the drainage plan as being adequate in giving the developer the green light to go ahead and do the work on the property. But it's anticipation that at the end of the work, the certificate of completeness would be issued, the bond would be released, and the roads would be recommended for acceptance by the town. That's how we laid it out in mediation.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, Don can give his client's opinion as well, or perspective, but that was my understanding of how we landed after mediation.
And Mr. Chair, I'd be happy to respond to that if you're ready for me.
Attorney Bornstein.
Great. So I don't disagree with Dan. We have, we had a binding term sheet that was signed at the end of mediation, you'll remember that. We stayed late and typed it up and had all the core terms of the settlement in there. And since then, Dan and I had completed, you know, more comprehensive settlement agreement and incorporated all those terms. That thing, that settlement agreement, has all the details of what happens and when. So I think the step that I think the board needs to take tonight, or the vote that's needed, is, I think we need a minor modification of the existing comprehensive permit to accept the plan that Pat has just described for you. And then that will clear the way for us to proceed towards doing that work. That's another milestone in the settlement agreement. The settlement agreement has a bunch of other milestones that include dismissing the case. Ultimately, when the work's done, we'd be back to the board for the certificate compliance vote, now that the work is done on that, and then that triggers a bunch of other things. There's conveyances of lots to the town and to the town's designee for affordable housing. And ultimately, that all leads to dismissal of the pending lawsuits and to release of the security that's held by the town, and a payment to the town, you remember, of $100,000 to be used towards affordable homes on some of the remaining lots that'll be conveyed over to the town's designee, so. But all that's spelled out in good detail. I'm very comfortable with the roadmap that we have in the settlement agreement. I suspect, Dan, and the board is as well, if you remember, it's been a little while. That goes back to December, I think. But we have a very detailed roadmap of all that. Tonight, I think we've got to vote on that minor modification to get us to the next step.
Yeah, thank you, Attorney Bornstein. When you said minor modification, now that makes perfect sense to me, and yeah, I think that's exactly what we needed to do tonight, a minor modification to the permit that lets you keep going. And yeah, I mean, as you know, I'm aware of the settlement agreement, so I'm good with that. So I think what we're talking about is a minor modification, and somehow we just need to identify the specific set of drawings or plans or whatever it is, and I don't necessarily have that in front of me to be able to do that, but it would be a minor modification to comprehensive permit. Okay, that makes sense. I do have one other issue that I think we probably need to bring up, it's a loose end. It's a loose end, it's not specifically related to the settlement and the mediation, et cetera, but back in January, there was an issue of closing out the peer review funds that Mr. Hingerani had, and there was seemingly some question and confusion as far as what, you know, what Mr. Hingerani should have continued to be paying for and not paying for, and I think, Attorney Bornstein, you even, I think, opined at some point on this. But I think the bottom line is, and I'm trying to find a mail that I had Katrina send me, I think there was an amount of money, like $600, $654.22, that Mr. Hingerani had proposed to pay to the town to kind of settle that account, and call it even is actually the words he used. Can we get that resolved as well? And, you know, in my opinion, I think we should just accept Mr. Hingerani's offer. I think the, you know, you know, looking at the spreadsheet that he'd sent, it seemed to make sense to me, and I don't know, Mr. Hingerani has an opinion on that at this point, I know that was, you know, many months ago, but it'd be good if we can get that resolved as well.
And, Mr. McCusker, I was not directly prepared to discuss that peer review issue, although we do have Peter on the line, and I suspect he could confirm for us whether that's still the status of things that there was. So I think the description I've just heard is that there would be an additional $654.22, and that's the money that's in the peer review account now that would be released, or that's the additional deposit necessary to...
That would be additional funds.
All right, and I can confirm...
And we can table this if we don't want to do this now. I mean, it's, in my opinion, Peter had put it on the table back in January, and I can remember at that time, kind of going through and looking at things and being a little unsure myself of whether Mr. Hingerani had a responsibility to help pay for things moving forward, coming out of the mediation, et cetera, and I think the opinion was, no, he doesn't. So it just seems like that $654 probably is the right number to close out what had happened up to the point of mediation.
Sure, so, and you'll remember, my position before had been, you know, we were beyond the original permitting, we were in litigation, it was no longer the applicant's requirement to pay peer reviews, that those were then expert witnesses in litigation costs of the town, not something that could be pushed on to the applicant. All that said, I do have confirmation, while we've been talking just now from Mr. Hingerani, that he is still willing to pay that $654.22 and just clear that issue off the table. And we just note, and so the board's aware, and I suspect the town is anxious as well just to put this settlement agreement through its final paces, clear the milestones that set for us, and, you know, we're just expecting cooperation from the town and its staff and its peer reviewers, and you'll get cooperation from us to get us to the finish line, and Dan and I will try and stay in communication to get us there. So in that nature, Mr. Hingerani's authorizing the $654.22, even though I've told him he's not obligated to pay.
That's great, and, you know, that'll save us the debate on that issue. And I do hope, you know, since the mediation, the town, and I don't know, maybe the town really hasn't had to engage in any way, but I hope, I hope that the town has been supportive and in working diligently with your team, you know, and if there has been any problem or anything along those lines, I haven't heard it, and I'd like to know about it, but I agree with your sentiment. We should all be working together towards resolving this and putting it all behind us after 20-some-odd years, and, you know, hopefully we all are. So, and if they're not, please, you know, I'd like to know that, and, you know, let Attorney Hill know that, and we can do what we can to make sure things move forward.
Okay, that's great. Dan and I are generally in good communication with each other, so I think with this minor modification approved tonight, that's going to clear the runway to quickly tick off the rest of these milestones that need to be done to finish up this settlement that's been outstanding a while.
So to the board, to the rest of the board, I, you know, I think what we need is a motion that I had loosely mentioned. I don't have, I don't have the right information in front of me to reference a specific plan or, you know, those lines, because I don't have anything printed out. If anyone has, you know, I think what we want is just a, you know, a motion to determine that changes proposed as documented in blah, 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 are considered a minor modification to the comprehensive permit. I think that's all the motion needs to say. I just, I can't do it.
There is a public comment, if you want to take that.
This is not a public hearing.
I mean, it's a...
I'm just saying, it's not a public hearing, but whatever you want to do.
Should we open that?
I would recommend that you give, I think it's, I think it's the owner of Lot 76. So I would recommend allowing her to make her comments and then proceed.
All right, and I can't see on the...
Oh, yeah, he'd have to show you who the participants are. I have it, so, do you want me to?
Uh, yeah.
Oh, wait, it's the wrong person. Where'd Nancy go?
Hello, Nancy Pecone, 3 High Point Drive. I appreciate you allowing me to speak.
Go ahead.
Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Okay. I wish I had known about this, because I wouldn't have spent the last few days wheelbarrowing dirt out of the bottom of my pool so I could get it ready for my grandkids, if I knew you were just going to fill it with dirt again. These rains in the last few days, I'm sure none of you have been here to see what's going on, but I do have video. have video. I'm sorry, I was cut out of the mediation with my attorney and you continued to mediate without me. I know I wasn't a party to that. So I understand that just allowing me to speak is fine. But if you do allow them to start digging uphill of me again, I will have to file a cease and desist. And I also have a counter suit against the developer's lawsuit against me. And I have tried to just file in the last few months a lien against all of their assets because they are dealing with you and they're going to give you the damages that go, should go to me. And I understand the town has been damaged as well with this awful neighborhood, and you want it to end. But I'm not going to let you fill my pool with dirt again in the next two to three weeks. I'm just, it's cease and desist. Whatever I have to do, I'll call the news stations. You vote however you need to vote. Thank you for letting me speak again. This is just awful, what you've allowed them to do. Have a good night.
So, Mr. Chairman, just to correct the record, Ms. Pecone participated in the mediation and actually left, and she wasn't cut out. So that's factually just incorrect, for those of you who were not there. So...
We were told to leave. We were told to leave.
I was there, Ms. Pecone. You were not told to leave. You left.
My lawyer was there as well. Mr. Bressard told us that our part was over and it was time to leave. And I will swear on a stack of bibles about that, Mr. Hill.
You could swear on as many bibles as you want. That's not what happened. So...
That is what happened.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'll just add to what, to what Dan said. I wasn't there when Ms. Pecone left, so I have no idea what those circumstances were.
Evan Bressard was.
But I do know that there was an impartial mediator, Attorney Bobowski, very well respected, who really kind of drove this whole thing. And, you know, I, and he did say, when he was back meeting with the applicant, Mr. Hingerani, and essentially the town, that, you know, the Pecone's left and he, you know, they left on their own accord is what he seemed to be implying. And he felt that it was appropriate if a settlement could be made right then and there to do it. So, you know, as a representative of the ZBA at that point in time, you know, I kind of had to go and I felt confident going with what the independent mediator was saying and advising us to do. So, again, I don't know the specific circumstances. I wasn't there for Ms. Pecone. They were in a completely separate room. They never were in the same room with us, which quite frankly, I think was unfortunate. But regardless, you know, we were guided by an independent mediator to get to where we got to.
And just to summarize, the intent of this agreement is to resolve the drainage issues. So hopefully, this work that we'll build on shortly would accomplish that.
That's exactly right. And, you know, the other thing is, it does, the town has made it very clear that the lot in front of Ms. Pecone's house probably will not be developed. The town wants that for access to drainage that's in that area. So, you know, she's kind of gaining, you know, no house in front of hers, which is, which is what the plan shows. The intent has always been to do everything we possibly can for Ms. Pecone. I think that this board has gone way beyond what just about any other ZBA would do to get to this point. You know, we very easily could have gone with words that came out of Jeff Walsh's RPE review, that there wasn't necessarily an issue. And we could have gone with that and signed off on this development. But we deferred to the pictures, et cetera, we saw from the Pecone's, and made that decision to not approve or give the final sign off on the subdivision that led to the mediation that got the Pecone's into that mediation session to try and get this whole thing resolved. You know, I think, I think we've done everything we possibly could to get this situation resolved. And quite frankly, we still think that this will help to resolve the issues. You know, we've got engineered drawings. We've got our own peer review, very respective peer review on it. Everyone seems to think that this is going to solve the problem. So, you know, I'm sorry that Ms. Pecone's still having issues. I don't know what else we can do to try to resolve those. But, you know, I hope this does it. And of course, if Ms. Pecone does what she has to do.
Mr. Yelwens.
Yes. I attended that meeting along with Mr. McCusker, and I agree with his observation of the lawyer coming in and telling us that they had left the meeting.
Okay. Katrina, do we have a, what's the date on that plan?
The one from Peter?
Yes.
He emailed it to me on July 11th.
Is there, is there an identifier on the plan itself?
Oh, yeah. Hold on.
If I may, I'm prepared to speak to that. I was hearing Mr. McCusker and the detail he wanted to get into the record. With respect to identifying the plan, I understand the ZBA was considering a minor modification. And I would, I don't know if you can type fast enough, Katrina. I'll try to go slow.
I'll watch the, I'll watch the video.
Minor modification of Patrick C. Garner Company Incorporated's plan entitled Proposed Improvements Plans dated November 21, 2022, and last revised April 3, 2023, concerning work grading, I'm sorry, concerning grading and drainage work northeast and south of Lot 76. I didn't have a more precise depth title that would identify only this plan. So I had to add a little extra language there.
All right. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Jeff, where, so are you actually looking at the plans?
I'm pulling it up right now.
Yes, I am, Bill.
Okay.
It's right there in the corner. See it?
All right. And is there a stamp on these, a ZBA stamp?
Not on this copy. This is Peter's email. But yes, I have a, I have a stamp. I stamped it in on, I think the 12th, the 11th or the 12th, I did stamp it in. But I do have it stamped on my desk. And it was stamped in with the town clerk.
And just to the applicant, you're comfortable that this plan identifies significantly enough everything that needs to get done? If we just point to this plan, that's going to be good to go for the minor modification? Anyone from the applicant?
Yeah, I know Patrick's still with us. But yes, that I understand is our drainage plans, what we proposed as the minor modification. It's also referenced in Sean Reardon's letter that the zoning board has referenced specifically.
Yeah. And I was going to say, subject to the conditions listed in Sean Reardon's letter.
Yes.
What's the date on that letter?
July, July 14th, I believe. I can double check, though. Hold on.
That is correct.
It's July 14th?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, are we ready for a motion? Is, obviously, now, does anyone else want to say anything?
Is there any further discussion from the board? Any comments? Yeah. So at this time...
Oh, Katrina, you're killing me. You took it away.
Oh, that's all right. Sorry. I was trying to make sure nobody else wanted to... Okay. There you go.
All right. I moved that the zoning board of appeals make a determination that the proposed improvements for High Point Estates subdivision, Grafton, Massachusetts, dated, dated November 21, 22, and revised five times, final revision on April 3, by Patrick C. Garner Company Incorporated, determined to be a minor modification to the High Point Estates comprehensive permit, subject to the conditions described in the letter of July 14 from Sean Reardon.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. We'll take a roll call vote. Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Yelwens?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. The motion is allowed. All right. So that, and this time, we'll move on to, back to case number 892 for 59 Pleasant Street.
Mr. Chair, just before I sign off, if I could throw out one reminder while you're all in the room together. This is Don Bornstein, attorney for the applicant, Mr. Hingerani. This is more a reminder for Dan. Dan, we still need the countersigned settlement agreement back from you. I know you've had that. I just don't have a copy for my file yet. So if we can just make sure we get that back to me, that would be great.
Will do.
Great. Thank you, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
So everyone that has come in for the 59 Pleasant Street, can you please make sure you've all signed in? The sign in sheet is right up there by the door. Thank you.
Katrina, you probably should, I think right now Nancy's on as a panelist, and I think don't we typically move somebody out?
She's on as an attendee. How did she get in there?
Well, you, didn't you move her in to be able to speak?
Okay. All set.
Okay. And then, who's Brooke M.? Or Jason, for that matter. I mean, I think they're also in as panelists now, aren't they?
Yep.
Hi. Brooke M. is my daughter. My name is Kelly Majewski. I currently reside at 60 Pleasant Street.
Okay. I need you as an attendee. Let me just...
Yep.
Actually, I guess they aren't. I don't know.
No, they should be attendees and not panelists.
Yeah.
I somehow put them in. There we go.
All right. So this evening, I believe we're going to talk traffic, and then also the report of ECO Tech. So, I don't recall. Did we have an order that we were going to do these in?
Well, they're both on, both Arthur and Kevin's here. So either one, you can start with. They both had previous meetings. Hold on. I think Kevin, I need to promote Kevin. So give me a second.
I thought Kevin asked to go first. And, you know, I don't, if I remember correctly, I think Kevin asked to go first, like he has something else coming, or he's got other things to do.
Yes, because Kevin has...
I'm done with my meeting, so I can go whenever.
I think Kevin did want to go first because he's got to get back and finish a report for something tomorrow.
Thank you, Katrina. I just accepted as panelist. Good evening, Mr. Chair and members of the ZBA. My name's Kevin Dandrid, Principal TEC Incorporated, performing the peer review on behalf of the board. And thank you for indulging my schedule this evening. And if it's okay with you, I can just give a quick synopsis of what we've seen since the last meeting when I joined you in person, what we've reviewed, what we just finished up in draft form this morning. And then to give you the, I guess, the initial opinions about the mitigation scheme for what it means, understanding that there may be another follow-up discussion with the applicant's team, just to try to confirm some of those things that we've identified in addition to what they had proposed. And if it's okay, what I'd like to do is share my screen, Katrina?
Yeah. You should be able to share.
Okay, great. Everybody see my screen, okay? Okay, great. So since we met last month, the applicant, their team has submitted a series of materials in response to our comments from our letter dated June 15. We have received and reviewed the response to comments package from GPI. And I could see Ms. Monticup there in front of the board this evening, fire truck turning plans, garbage truck turning plans, and a sightline exhibit to document the sightlines on the site plan. I'm happy to report that all of our technical comments related to the site plan have been reasonably addressed with the detail that we had requested, to be able to confirm the adequacy of the truck sweeps in and around the site, all different combinations of movements for fire trucks, trash trucks, et cetera, to get in and around the site. Turning points and GPI had worked cooperatively to provide that information to us. GPI had also, within their response to comments, done what we had requested, which was perform a quarter-long safety analysis for the different intersections to document in writing some of those challenges that we had, at a high level, identified that they put more numbers and discussion to. And then they had proposed the applicant's mitigation offering within GPI's letter dated July 10. We received the package a week ago, last Tuesday afternoon or Wednesday afternoon, and understanding that it was important for the board to have this productive dialogue, we jumped right on it and we were able to summarize our thoughts. I do have a draft letter prepared. I'm going to walk you through that this evening. And then I can finalize it following this evening for issuance to the town and to the applicant. In general terms, again, they had done the different sightline assessments at a series of intersections from south to north, along the Pleasant Street corridor, as we had requested, performed other assessments for intersections like Pleasant at Elmwood, which is up on the screen now. And as, I think it would be productive, just to go from south to north, because it's consistent with what I've already drafted in the letter, that the recommendation that we had to investigate the opportunity for doing a stop ahead sign for those that approach Main Street to the south, they're going to be doing that. And knowing that Mastod's completing the improvements down here on Main Street, that checks the box on the only item that we had identified as a deficit there. Within the intersection at Elmwood, they did identify certain challenges, dealing with the uniqueness of the three out of four-way stop. This was not part of the original study area, but they had expanded it to perform a formal assessment here. As you've probably seen in driving through the intersection, there are certain unique characteristics, like this little slip lane, which cuts off the southwesterly corner of the intersection, which is very unique and introduces, in my opinion, unnecessary conflicts here. There's also the challenges of the sightline with some brush up closer to the rail tracks for those that come westbound on Elmwood Street and approach the stop line. They had offered to add stop signs down here. There are none today. And then to add some other accompanying signs to the three out of four-way stop. They also had some other verbiage to, with some other recommendations. I would like to offer to the board that, my opinion is that they have an opportunity to try to improve some of the sightlines by clearing some brush along the easterly edge of Pleasant Street here. And if that's the case, it removes one of those current sightline obstructions from this stop line. Given the conflicts that exist in and around the southeastere corner, I'll be recommending that this pavement be pulled up. It's, you know, relatively inexpensive to do, but that would also... It's, you know, relatively inexpensive to do, but that would also go a long ways to reduce the level of conflicts as new traffic is generated that comes to and from the project at this southerly point. With the removal of this pavements, those movements can still occur within the four way intersection up here. But it creates an opportunity for maybe, you know, a tree planting or some other low landscaping here once the pavement is pulled up. As we go further to the north, and again, you know, supplementing with some other warning signs about alerting the traffic on the three stop, three approaches that have stop signs with the other signs that are permitted in the federal manual that we reference, which is called the MUTCD. Things like oncoming traffic does not stop, just to better clarify that existing traffic control. Further north at Christopher Drive, they had identified that was a minor sight distance deficiency there related to some brush at the edge of the right of way, and that they would offer to trim those overgrown bushes on the northwest corner of the intersection to improve those sightlines. We do recommend that that be pursued, and we did not have any other identified items there. As we look up at Hudson, Pleasant and Hudson, that is an intersection that we talked about somewhat extensively at the last hearing, knowing that that is a location on the north side of the project that has, I apologize, operating slowly today as I can around. Operating slowly, but there are sightline obstructions there. Those have been documented by GPI. And they had offered to do some clearing around some signs around the corner. But ultimately, you know, I do continue to recommend that without doing other physical improvements that would modify the wall and possibly impact private property, that this location be considered as an always stop. It is permitted in the MUTCD without having met volume warrants. It is an option to be able to introduce an always stop for an approach that, whose sightlines are compromised and may not be easily improved. It is a low cost improvement. But I think along with the safety benefits here, it will also have that other benefit of calming traffic in that area just north of the site. With Pleasant Street being free flow today, and if we introduce stop signs and stop lines, I would also recommend stop ahead signs. But that would take the curse off that very poor sightline as you come down Hudson Ave to the stop line and look to the right and between the curve and the crest of the hill and some of the brush, that would provide a appropriate level of safety mitigation there, in my opinion. As we look further to the north towards Pollard, this is a little bit more of a challenge. The GPI's report did identify that there are deficiencies where this car is positioned here, looking to the right as you try to look over the crest of this hill to the north. This is a little bit unique in the fact that this intersection has a Y shape here. There is limited traffic that we've seen that uses this little slip lane here. And if you were to pull up to this location here, you do have acceptable stop sightlines. But the geometry is such that it does encourage speed, as you've probably seen, as you come north on Pleasant Street and go over the river, that this sweeping curve here does encourage higher turning speeds in this area as well as having compromised sightlines at the current stop line location here. So we will be recommending that there be physical improvements here to tee this up towards the northerly end of this cluster of intersections here because it does provide a superior vantage point in sightlines at that location. That would mitigate the, oh, and the GPI had also offered trimming brush in this direction, which I do agree would be a good idea. So with the realignment in this area, there's one tree here, there's one hydrant. Might be able to be done without touching the hydrant, but ultimately to try to provide a tee up in here. And what that would do is provide some additional green space at this corner. And with a tighter radius, encourage slower turning speeds from Pleasant to Pollard in a new alignment. So between the geometry and positioning it at the point where you can get a better sightline, I believe that's very important for this gateway location to the north for the traffic that's coming to and from the project.
Kevin, can I just interrupt you real quick? I just, before we move off of this intersection, I just want to make sure I understand, we all understand what you're recommending. So you're saying, right now there's two legs, you're saying consolidate these two legs into one leg, and that leg, that tee would be roughly where the island is?
Exactly, towards the northeastally end of this.
Okay.
Because in this location, from this mini intersection up to this one, it climbs in grade. So as you're kind of down here in the hole, hole, looking to the right, you're at a point where it's a very short sightline trying to look up and over the hill. If it's consolidated towards this end of the intersection towards the northeast, it does provide superior sightlines in that area. So an opportunity for what I believe is a safety, important safety improvements here that also calms traffic at the same time. Other traffic calming initiatives, they have offered to install one of the radar speed feedback signs, you know, that would alert drivers of their actual operating speed in relation to the posted speed limit. I think that's great. I think it's consistent with the one that's out there today, but I would encourage that they consider two additional ones, just given the fact that the Pleasant Street corridor is nearly one in 1.75 miles long, that I think having one in each direction somewhere about a third of the way into the corridor would be helpful as a reminder, given its length. Those are not very expensive, and they can be done with solar power. So it doesn't involve a lot of digging or service connections or the like. They do have to be placed in a spot that obviously gets sun, but there are a number of locations up and down the corridor where that could be possible within the existing right of way. For the pedestrian accommodations, they've offered to, and it's shown on the site plan, to construct a sidewalk along that frontage to provide the new crosswalk over to Christopher with what we call a RRFP or rectangular rapid flashing beacon, which is something that the pedestrian can push, and then the alternating warning lights go off on each side of the road facing both directions. That'll be a great improvement to try to connect for other possible, you know, walking opportunities. But I do believe, as we suggested in our original letter, that I believe it's important that, given that it's a very isolated section of sidewalk that they provide a contribution to the town, that the town can use in the future to be coordinated with other municipal funds or other project funds to try to perform study and or design and or construction of pedestrian facilities in this area. So I continue to suggest that that is an important piece to make sure that the pedestrian scene is not looked at in just isolation, but it can actually include some funding that the town can use to connect the dots in the future. GPI's report did confirm that the intersection up at 122 and Pleasant Street does indeed satisfy traffic signal warrants that does not require, but suggests that a traffic signal may be appropriate. I think that's important for identifying the facts associated with the traffic impact study and the characteristics of that intersection as it exists today and with the addition of site generated traffic. I do understand that the applicant has already committed other funds, and I understand that they're in the order of $360,000. But understanding that that intersection does have queuing issues today, and it's more of a capacity item up there, not a safety item, that with the facts that GPI has presented, I would recommend that it would might be a good opportunity for the town to use some of those funds to advance discussions to program a project in the future with MastDOT. That is their jurisdiction up at that northerly end. But I have focused mostly on those safety related issues, the items within the town's jurisdiction, and I'll be memorializing these thoughts within a letter. But knowing that it's in draft form, I wanted to, you know, see what came out of the dialogue this evening to see if there are any other comments from the ZBA, any other observations or input from the applicant that may be helpful in clarifying anything that I talked about this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? Mr. McCusker?
Yeah, I've got a few. I just, to Kevin, want to go back to really kind of the last comments that he made, and maybe I missed something. Can you talk a little more, I think you were talking about the lights, the possible light at Pollard. And I thought that the applicant was going to conduct some sort of a study that was part of like the first step towards that. Can you just talk about that? Maybe say what you said, but say it in different words so somebody dense like myself understands it. Where do we stand with that right now?
So knowing that during our initial site visits before last month's meeting, before we issued our letter, we had identified congestion delays at the stop sign at the end of Pleasant Street where it meets 122 and Providence Road, and we had requested, because it was kind of a gap in the study to assess those characteristics, those delays, but also does it meet the threshold for considering a traffic signal under existing conditions? So they collected additional data. They assessed what we thought could be an influence of pulling some of the trips at Pollard and 122 over to Pleasant 122 as far as the analysis goes because those trends are similar in nature, those that try to go north through town on 122. So they did that, that data collection, they did the analysis to show that it is sufficiently high for traffic volumes to warrant that type of device. But the great bulk of that is existing traffic, and it's more of a capacity consideration there rather than a full traffic safety issue. So their percent influence, you know, percentage of traffic influence at that intersection is low because traffic's had the opportunity to distribute on other roads by that point. But they did what we asked to assess it, to provide those facts, and I think there's an opportunity where funds from the applicant can be used to help start a project development process with DOT. But it is DOT's facility, so hopefully that they would be receptive to learn from what was recently studied, you know, and work with the town to identify the potential for future improvements.
Okay, so do you, can you tell us what the percent of traffic that they're adding? Do you have that, or I'm sure it's somewhere?
I don't have it on my fingertips, but I didn't print the full report here in front of me, but I can try to go dig into that as we, you know, if there's other discussion.
Okay, and maybe the applicant's engineer could comment on that. So so at this point, what the applicant has done has done some analysis to provide data that then could be used as input to the overall process of getting a light there. But obviously, we can't make the applicant put a light there. He can't put it there even if he wanted to. We need to get that going with the state. Is that correct?
Exactly, and it's a longer process on that end, and it's also outside the town's jurisdiction.
Yeah.
So that was a big part of the rationale for that location as well.
Okay, all right. I'm going to come back to that question. All right, so the always stop down at Elmwood, at that end.
Yes.
And this may be more a question for Dan or others, but first of all, you know, again, we can't make the applicant put a stop sign there. It's not, it's not in our jurisdiction. I guess the question becomes, what can we, the ZBA, do to try to facilitate an improvement like that? I mean, anything?
Well, that's something that boards have, you know, traditionally talked to DPW or whoever is in charge of those types of improvements in the town. It's, I'm assuming where this is a town road. Pleasant Street is a town road, and the side streets are all town roads. So whoever has jurisdiction over the town road would be consulted, and if the DPW thinks it's a good idea, and you're, I think you guys have a traffic committee here in town, right?
Yeah.
So you want to consult with them. And so if there's a consensus to do these improvements, then the board could require as a condition of approval of the permit that the applicant contribute some kind of monetary amount to a fund, a revolving fund, or some fund that we could use to tap into to help pay for those costs. But you're right, we can't, we can't condition the project on those improvements happening since they're not within the control of the applicant.
Right.
And I'm a little confused by the dollar amounts that were stated because I, the developer's traffic engineer, I think, put in her letter that there was a commitment of $360,000. And I'm not clear where that number is coming from. I think there was an MOU sign between the selectman and the developer, which I haven't really studied that closely, but just looking at it real quick, it looks like there was $100,000 to be offered, so I'm not sure where the 360 comes from, and I'm also not sure whether that 360 was committed for some other use, that the SLUC board had some other idea for that money.
Was that sewer use fees?
Yeah, I think it, I think that includes the sewer use fees. And yeah. I believe that's what that was.
And just to be clear, Mr. Chair, that the recommendations that I have for other supplemental needs, I would suggest that they would be attributable to the applicant to address existing safety deficiencies before the addition of additional traffic in and out of the site. So and a lot of the things that I mentioned, maybe apart from Pollard, are pretty low cost items.
Okay. A couple more things. The, and this may be more directed to the applicant. You know, if there's actual drawings for the fire truck, you know, moving around the site, I would recommend that you go back to the fire department and get an explicit sign off on that. I'm not necessarily going to make that a condition. Well, maybe we should, but, you know, we have history in town with developer actually building something that the fire department said was okay and then had to unbuild it. I'm talking about up at Flint Pond, when the fire department said, oops, we actually can't get the truck in there. So, you know, I think you might want to make sure that they are really good with that drawing. And then well, I guess this is, the next question was going to be, you know, the whole reconfiguring of Pollard. What can we do there? I guess it's all the same as down at Elmwood. So you know, Elmwood and Pollard, we've got recommendations from the professionals on how to make things safer. You know, I guess really the next step is to our traffic safety committee and DPW and you know, and then go from there, I guess, is really the next thing. The last question I have is, you referenced the northeast corner of Elmwood and Pleasant doing some trimming or something along those lines. Did I understand that correctly, that the expectation and the applicant has agreed to do some sort of cutback up there? And do we know who owns that corner and?
That was something that we had suggested that would be a supplemental thing for them to investigate, you know, that, there is the railroad owner that's there. That area is actually already pulled back and it would appear to be at the fringe of the railroad right of way, and hopefully within the town's right of way where that can be achieved. And I don't think it's a monumental task, and that might be something that DPW is willing to do, you know, independent of the applicant. But I think that it's just one of those things that would clean up some of the sightlines knowing that the southbound approach on Pleasant Street, as you come over the tracks, has to stay free-flow, because any suggestion to add a traffic control device there would potentially queue up traffic across the tracks, which I don't see being a safe alternative. So clearing some sightlines, you know, better identifying some of the warning signs that can go with the stop signs, and then some minor cleanup to fix some of the geometry of the intersection. And again, it's, it might not even be something that requires a design plan, because it's that simple to try to remove some of that pavement and, you know, replace it with loam seed and some, you know, limited level of landscaping.
That's all the questions I have at this time.
Just for the record, this is Chad Boardman, the applicant. So just to, you know, kind of bypass some of the discussion here, to move forward here, well, we want to continue working with the whole corridor. We recognize its existing conditions, we know, we know things grow and this safety deficiencies through that whole corridor, so we know it's a mile and three-quarters long. But tonight, we'll do the entire corridor trimming. If we're going to trim, we're going to trim the entire corridor for sightline visibility. There's a few corners that the consultants did pick out. It's questionable where it is on the right of way, where it's the town or the property, but we'll pledge maybe with the town, or maybe the tree warden, and go to that person to see what, how much we can trim if it's on their property. Some, a lot of it seems to be scrubbed and they might want it down, you know, so we'll pledge that right off the bat. Same with signage, all signage were good for everything that was described about for the entire corridor. Stop signs, no issues marking with that. The only thing I'd have to obviously review, because we just got this, would be to really look at the Pleasant-Pollard intersection, if we're removing things or anything like that, there's this tremendous amount of work that might be done. We recognize that the town, sometimes there's a lot of effort to do certain things in town and it's easy for me to, for the developer to do. So that's why I think I could do a majority of most of these items, you know, tonight, and I do say I'll do that, other than I have to review the Pleasant-Pollard thing because that might be quite costly. But I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
And that goes for the speed, the speed signs as well. I already talked to the police chief in town, I met with him a couple weeks ago, and I said, I'll get you a couple more signs as well. So I'm totally fine with the, doing the one and two additionals. No problems with that as well.
I have two questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have a traffic safety committee that goes before the select board for any signage relative to traffic safety. I'd assume that these would have to go before the select board for approval. You've talked to the chief, you say?
Yeah, I did for the police chief, but I don't want to, I don't know if it's the board of select.
No, he's the chair of the, of the traffic safety committee.
Okay, good.
But they go before the select board for approval for those signs, so there has to be some coordination between our desire to...
Yeah, absolutely. We actually talked about that because I said, you know, we could do the signs, but, you know, I said to the chief, you know, you're not an engineer, I'm not an engineer, so I rely on, you know, the Tex and Mikes and Heather to, okay, show us the map of the corridor. Where exactly do you want the signs? We'll overlay it on a plan. And then hopefully, we start from there and then if it needs to go to the SLUC board for final approval.
Yeah, that would be presented to the traffic safety committee and for their approval. Then it goes before the select board for, and they generally recommend what the chief and the safety committee has reviewed.
Excellent.
I have one other question. Originally, a question came in from the chief as far as accessing, and Mr. McCusker spoke about the flow of trucks, but has the question been asked and satisfactorily answered as far as access from the back of the buildings with ladders?
Well, we'll actually clarify that because Steve O'Connell, who isn't here tonight, actually had a meeting with the fire department, I think maybe two weeks ago.
Okay.
And we'll follow up with the, as well with the trading radiuses of the fire apparatus, which we, took us a while to get working with the fire department, but, because we had to actually go to the fire department to measure the vehicles that they have. So that's where that came from, but we'll have the fire department make the appropriate response.
He raised that as, in his original comments, access by ladders, and that came up on some previous 40B developments, Mr. McCusker, as you recall. So that's, those are the two questions that I had.
Okay.
Any other questions? Attorney Hill?
Thank you. Kevin, there were a few issues that came up at the last hearing, which I'd like to get your input on. And actually, you mentioned a crosswalk with the hawk signal, or whatever you call it, the flashing beacon. Where would that crosswalk be and is that connecting to a sidewalk? Can you maybe explain where that is?
Sure, and I think I have an exhibit that I can bring up from the applicant's engineer. I'm going to share my screen again. This exhibit was prepared to document the location of the sightlines that's required in the industry standards that we have. And you can see this dimension of 14 and a half feet. The standard suggested from the edge of the driveway and Pleasant Street that that vantage point be 14 and a half feet back here. That was the purpose of this plan, but this plan also happens to show the proposed sidewalks, and then this is the location of the proposed crosswalk that would have the enhanced features with that flashing warning assembly.
So they're proposing to build a sidewalk on their frontage on Pleasant Street, correct?
Yeah, and a linkage on the opposite side and at the corner of Christopher, to then connect to the existing sidewalk on Christopher Drive.
And the sidewalk on Christopher Drive is on the other side?
Correct. So, you know, the, as this gets implemented, you know, they can confirm the actual accessibility characteristics of the ramps. You know, this is shown in sketch format only, but, you know, the grades of the ADA ramps to provide that connection to existing, and then I don't see them having a need to go any further to the west, as long as they connect to that facility. On the south side, they're introducing that sidewalk just to the south of the property line, but then stopping it just because that had the potential to affect other private parcels. And I think that's where, you know, Pleasant Street's a longer street, but I think having other funds that can be used for planning and design to connect the dots will hopefully turn this into something, maybe not in the near term, but long-term, into a connected facility.
And do we have a design plan for the sidewalk at this point, or is it just sketch on this plan?
It's just a sketch on this plan. I believe they may have other grades on their grading plan, and I believe they also have some details. But knowing that that is a facility within the right of way, similar to the very astute comments that were just made a minute ago, that those do need approval and blessing from DPW, you know, before moving forward.
And at the location of the proposed crosswalk, I think there was a, if I'm not mistaken, I think that the 85th percentile speed was around 43 miles an hour. Is that accurate?
That rings a bell. It was, you know, certainly above the statutory speed limit, but that's why we look at the actual, you know, based on the 85th percentile, make sure that those sightline characteristics for motor vehicles and pedestrians respects the actual operating speeds instead of just the posted.
Yeah, and do we have any stopping sight distance analysis at the crosswalk? I mean, I know we have it at the driveway intersection, but has anyone looked at whether there's sufficient sight distance to cross the street at that location?
I do not have any concerns at this time about that. It's a straight section of Pleasant Street, and it would be at the immediate edge of the roadway, so I don't see any reasons why that could not be attainable.
There's no vertical sight distance issue, there's no crests or anything?
Not in that stretch.
What about the bridge that's at Pollard? That was brought up at a prior meeting, that comment was made that that bridge is narrow, it's an old stone bridge, dangerous under current conditions. These are my notes. Did you evaluate that and is there anything of concern, or is there anything that we may want to look at in terms of mitigation?
In that area, knowing that traffic's just passing straight through, there were comments that I had heard from testimony from the public about, you know, walking, jogging, biking through that stretch, and it is narrow, but I don't believe it would be reasonable or necessarily feasible to investigate some of those things as, you know, a private applicant to address something as longstanding and possibly historic as that feature. I think that should be best served as a future town endeavor, given the complexity of what that would entail.
So I guess along those lines, I mean, we've talked about a lot of safety concerns with Pleasant, and there was discussion of a fair share sort of contribution for future improvements on Pleasant. And I'm not even talking about the intersection realignments, I think that's kind of separate. There's this Pollard and the one you mentioned, was it Elmwood? Or there's another intersection where you're going to eliminate one of the legs. But in terms of just overall, the need to have a sidewalk on Pleasant end-to-end at some point in the future, and particularly where this bridge is unsafe, can we quantify that in some way? Is there a way to say, you know, this project is going to contribute, you know, X percentage of cars on this street? I mean, is there a standard practice for that kind of calculation for a fair share contribution?
Yes, and I've done many of those in the past, and I've been more focused on the planning and design piece of this, and to keep it in a scale that would be reasonably applied to the applicant's, to affect something that can be coupled with other municipal funds or state funds, you know, grant programs, et cetera, to try to do that planning and design work. But to try to estimate, you know, the full length of construction costs and how that might be applied on a, for a basis, on a fair share estimate, I've been focused more on winding back from that to even looking at the feasibility on the municipal side of adding that type of facility. And it might not be the entire stretch, it might be done in phases and stages and sections, but ultimately to try to have some funds to be able to develop a plan for how to implement that in the future.
Is the MassWorks program an option for a townway? Is that something where, you know, I'm just thinking out loud here, but if we ask the applicant to say, "Design it," right? And then we, I think we've done this in Wayland, and we've done it in Norfolk, and a lot of other towns have kind of worked with applicants of big projects to say, "You design this thing, and then we'll go and get the funds from MassWorks." Is that something that could work here, do you think?
I think it could work. I think that with the type of elements that we've identified here, I never say never, but I think that that would be something where it would have to be the municipality that applies with the information, you know, the development program that's not cosponsored, but directly related to the economic development and the production of housing.
Right.
Or something like this. So that is an opportunity, but knowing that it's not exactly a densely populated area, it's a longer stretch of roadway, but it's certainly something that the town could pursue in the next round. But I think that the important piece is that the town would have to demonstrate, and the applicant would have to support the fact that that would be a critical piece that without the investment from the Commonwealth, the project could not go forward. And for something like that, longer stretches of sidewalk, I don't see that that would be a reasonable ask that, you know, if the Pleasant Street corridor didn't have a sidewalk, that the project couldn't move forward.
Right. All right, well, that sounds like a conversation we can have with the town planner and the town administrator to explore those options.
Absolutely.
And I just want to check my checklist here before we move off. Okay, I covered my list. Thanks.
Mr. Boardman?
Yeah, just in further response to the $100,000 donation to the town and also the $360,000, which would be 100 and the 260 fees. As we all remember, this was a lit process going forth in front of the board of selectmen. So we had the opportunity to negotiate some things kind of in our submission to the project. So we said, well, right up front, we can analyze the project and make a monetary contribution to the town to do certain projects that sometimes get ignored by the town perhaps, or they don't get funded a lot. So that was some of the spirit of the cooperation that $100,000 could be applied to, well, we need to do a study for this or that, or the aging community, you know, housing appeals, they don't get this or that, or certain things that kind of get neglected where some of that money can go. In our fees, the extra 260, I believe, was from the sewer fees. There's really, really high sewer fees that are charged in town, and when you have an apartment complex, obviously, they expand it to a large amount. So what was originally was proposed to us is that they'd waive the fees and they would knock them down if it went to the selectmen. But we, what we did was, well, we gave a, more or less a credit, would give it the money back. Instead of going to the sewer department, it'd go back into the general fund again, where the board of selectmen, and then the town could appropriate the funds where they deemed fit for special projects or where the board of selectmen thought the need was. So I just wanted to kind of clarify where that $100,000 came from, and I'm sure we can, you know, discuss the merits of the memorandum of understanding at, you know, perhaps the next meeting or something. But I just wanted to clarify that issue. Secondary going a little back in time was the, again, sidewalk-related. The sidewalk came up because the open space out towards the pond, the several walking trails with the Grafton Land Trust. And we thought it would be a great idea, whereas the large subdivision, obviously, upon Christopher Drive, where the sidewalk just ends, obviously, at the road, is that we could try to capture some of the walkers over there, funnel them in front of our place on a new sidewalk, and actually could come into our, our community and go through out and towards the back corridor where we have parking and additional walking trails to capture into the Grafton Land Trust. So that's where that came into play. And third, just a correction that we, Travis could correct me, the sidewalk that were proposed doesn't end at the lot line, it actually extends out into the subdivision of the next subdivision as well. So it does continue along the private, you know, the right of way, and it does connect to the cul-de-sac subdivision abutting us as well. In regards to the same thing, if people wanted to walk there and they used to go across people's yards and cut through the field, they could come out, navigate through the sidewalk, come in through the community with the sidewalk, and then obviously enter the trails out in the back. That was it. Just wanted to clarify a couple of those things.
So just one other thing, that sidewalk is designed, we proposed a vertical granite curb and cement.
You've got to move closer to the mic.
Vertical granite curb and cement concrete would be... Vertical granite curb and cement concrete would be that sidewalk, which was a revision based on comments from Jeff.
Is there a detail on that in your plan sheet?
There is.
Okay.
I've seen that in the...
That would be the types of materials that we typically recommend.
Mr. McCusker.
Yeah, a couple of things. One of Dan's last comments back on traffic, I had actually made a note almost saying the same thing. I think we need to have a conversation with Evan and the planner and others, maybe it's the Development Committee, whatever, that effectively says, hey, we've got these recommendations for traffic safety improvements in the Pleasant Street corridor. What do you guys want to do with it, right? And try and figure out what they think may be the next steps, et cetera. And maybe there are things that come out of a meeting along those lines that the applicant can actually help us provide or what have you. And maybe, you know, based on that information, we come back to the applicant and say, "Look, we want A, B, and C," or whatever it may be. So I think that needs to happen. I'm not sure who can make that happen or who can facilitate that. I can tell you right now, I can't do it in a very near term. But somehow, I think that's got to be the next step, is some sort of a meeting with, I'm just going to say, maybe this development team that meets periodically here in town. And maybe I can work remotely with Katrina and just draft a note or something off to Evan, or maybe I just call Evan. If the board wants me to, I could probably give him a call at least to try and get this ball rolling. But I agree that, I think that's the next step. And I think it's a little bit urgent. I'd like to try and get the town's input before we, you know, close this thing out or finalize what we have in front of us. That's one comment. The second comment is, and it kind of ties into what the applicant was just saying about the 360. This is a lip. You know, essentially, that 360 and a few other things were part of what the applicant, you know, essentially gave to the town in exchange for the select board's, you know, endorsement of this project. I think we want to be careful. You know, if we determine such and such a safety improvement is necessary for this project, I don't think it's our role to say, "Use that 360 to pay for it," right? I think that's really going to be up to the select board to make determinations of what to use that money for. If this was a traditional 40B, and if we determined that some safety improvement costs $360,000, and we wanted the applicant to pay for it, and the applicant agreed to pay for it, that'd be great. And at that point, that's kind of how the traditional 40Bs work. If we do that here in the lip, and we go and use all of the 360, then suddenly, we're not in a lip anymore. It's just a regular 40B. So, you know, if there are additional things that are necessary, I think that's something that the ZBA needs to negotiate with the applicant, separate from the 360. You know, and the applicant says, "No, that's their prerogative," as always. But I don't think that we can just make assumptions that, you know, we need, you know, X, and we've got $360,000 here to pay for it, so we'll use that 360 to pay for that. So I'm just kind of cautioning the board that we don't want to necessarily go down that path. Not saying that ultimately, those funds can't be used to pay for something like that, but it's not really our, I don't believe it's our role to use those funds for anything. I think that's, it's the select boards.
And just to clarify that, the, as Mr. Boardman explained, it's $100,000 of a contribution. It's, the 260,000 is, you know, waiving fees and applying those fees elsewhere. So it's, you know, fees that they would have paid, that instead of being paid to the sewer department are being paid elsewhere. So it's, you know, not a donation of 260,000.
That's an excellent point, Brian. That's a very good point. Thank you. And just to be clear, this board has never waived sewer fees or any of those sorts of fees. So it's not like, well, you know, we could have got you to waive them anyway, so, you know, we'll pretend you waived them, and now we're going to donate the 260. Because we've never, ever done that in 20 years of doing 40Bs that I've been in this town.
And Mr. Chair, if it makes sense, I can directly copy DPW and Planning on my pending letter, because I think part of the discussion too is making sure that they're on board with the recommendations that we'll be making before getting too far into the weeds about the dollars. You know, if they're in agreeance about the types of the safety-related improvements that we've identified, then I think going to the next step of doing the generation of the estimates and how it's, you know, the numbers that might be applied and assessed to the applicant would make sense after initial read by those department heads.
Yep. That makes sense to me. And would it make sense to also copy the Traffic Safety Committee directly?
Yep, I can do that.
Any further questions or comments on traffic?
Mr. Chairman, it might be, I mean, I don't know how the Traffic Safety Committee works in town, but that, you may want to invite them to come to a meeting, come to one of our hearings, to discuss, as Bill suggested, to discuss, because I sort of view this, this issue as one of the main issues in this case. This and probably the Wetland Impact issues, which we'll hear from next from Mr. Allen. So you might want to invite them to come to a hearing dedicated to that specific topic, and we can have a roundtable about these recommendations, and what might be a priority, what's not a priority, and then think about how to assess perhaps some of the expense onto the applicant.
Hey, Dan, and I'm definitely thinking on the fly here, including when I was talking a few minutes ago. But would it make sense for me to do what I said? I'll reach out to Evan, kind of summarize what we've been talking about here, maybe drive towards some sort of a meeting within Town Hall. In other words, I guess where I'm headed here is, would it make sense to maybe take this into more of a working group with the professionals, formulate a bit of a plan or an ideas or that sort of stuff, and then maybe come back into, you know, a meeting here to kind of discuss where the professionals at Town Hall think that we need to go.
Yeah.
As opposed to bringing them in first.
I agree with that. Yep.
I'm willing to do that. I don't know about my time for actually sitting in a meeting with them. I'll worry about that if I get to that point. But I'm more than willing to reach out to Evan in, you know, probably the morning or in the very near future, and try and have this conversation. Would the board's agreeable to that?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Okay. And so we'll try and drive this a little bit in a working group fashion. And then, at the very least, I'll report back at our next, because this will get continued, I'm sure. So I'll report back at the next hearing where we stand. And maybe that means we've brought in some of the professionals or traffic safety or what have you, but I'll go from there.
Thank you. Mr. Boardman.
Just throwing out there, it can be yes or no, or the board's pleasure. Of course, you know, I could be available also to do any of those sidewalks as well. As I said about a half hour ago, you know, TEC's recommendation of most of their items, I pretty much almost pledged to really 75% of them anyways. So, but I don't know what the DPW has plans on some of those intersections as well. So, you know, I'm open to coming to the board as well, just to expedite the process faster. You might be able to say, "Yeah, I'll do it." Boom, right there. Done, done.
Yeah. Good point, Chad. And I'll keep that in mind. So, you know, when I reach out to Evan, you know, my expectation is that we probably need to have a working group meeting in Town Hall. And I agree, it would make sense for you to be there as well.
Okay. No, I appreciate it.
I think three stop signs at Hudson and Pleasant would probably be a good thing in theory, but I think it would be pretty drastic. But it's worth talking about. That is a terrible corner.
All right. Any other comments or questions from the board on traffic before we move on to Wetlands?
Mr. Chair, just an administrative item, if I could. In the spirit of cooperation, we had jumped on to the peer review. We've offered an amendment, because we were more or less covered through the first peer review and the first meeting, and a little extra coordination. So we've submitted an amendment for the board's consideration for the time to get through this most recent review in the past week and tonight's meeting. If you could please review and approve that at some point.
We will. Well.
Okay.
Okay.
Did we do more numbers on the traffic flow? Did we do any more traffic counts?
That was done prior to the last meeting, I believe.
We've only had one set, right?
Yeah, we, I'm sorry. For the record, Heather Monica with Greeman Peterson, we did more ATR counts to justify the numbers. That was the updated traffic study that we were, that was submitted to the town and what TEC received. And then, since the last meeting, we went out and did 12-hour turning movement counts and another ATR on the roadway because schools were not in session, to make sure that the counts that we got didn't need to be adjusted. So all of that information from our last meeting to today's meeting has been submitted in the response to comment letter that TEC has already reviewed and discussed the output.
I know since school has stopped, just the traffic going by my driveway on Brigham Hill is down to nothing. No, so any count after school, to me, is no good. Because without that school population, there's a lot of people go down Hudson Ave, Pleasant Street, just to get to the high school and the middle school.
So was there anything notable from those counts?
It was within 30 cars in a day. It was on Pleasant Street, that is not a side street, right? It's a quarter, right? The traffic counts were immeasurably different.
Really?
Yeah. Which is a bit shocking, right? But we did exactly what you asked.
But you timed it, correct? Like from seven o'clock in the morning?
It's the whole.
Because it's only an hour that it's like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Or half an hour, actually.
We were looking at the whole, we looked at the whole day.
I'm not saying it's like that all day. Just that drop-off for school.
And Mr. Chair, I did review that aspect within GPI's report and agree with how they assessed it, so that they had the original counts. They did the updated Pleasant Street counts to fine-tune them in the fully updated study, whatever it was, six or eight weeks ago. And then, by doing another Pleasant Street count, along with the 12-hour counts up at Providence Road, that was another way of checking to make sure that if it required an adjustment, you know, as you compare apples to apples, everything could float up or down. But as Ms. Monica said, it was very comparable, and I'm not concerned with the way the analysis was done in any way.
And while I have two traffic consultants here, I'm just curious on the flow of traffic out of this development. I went to a Grafton master plan, they're going to do a new one. So I went to that meeting, but before I went, I read my old one. And it was a kind of a weird night, but I did find one. When you spend your night reading one of these, you're desperate.
Especially one that old.
11.7 trips per day per residential unit, they say, comes out of Grafton. Is that...
Single-family home on average is 10 trips a day.
10? Okay. So this is close.
Just on average, you know.
Now, what's an apartment? I don't think we've ever talked about that.
I don't, I don't have that information off the top of my head.
Yeah, it's somewhere around six trips per day, on average.
How many?
Per condo or apartment.
Six.
Six? So that would be 624 at 6. Okay. That's all I had.
Any other comments or questions on traffic from the board? All right.
Can I say something, or is this mine? I love...
So we'll open it up to public comment. Kevin, are you going to stay on?
I can stay on for a few more minutes.
Yeah. Brian, I was going to suggest that maybe you do open up just to traffic, so that if there's anything Kevin needs to respond to, he can get out of here.
Yeah. So, yeah, traffic. Do you want to come up to the podium?
As I understand it, Wendy Reed, 14 Coventry Road. As I understand it, there's another development going in at the end of Pleasant by 122A. Is that correct? Another, no, did I misunderstand that?
Where did you say?
That the, close to the intersection of Pleasant and 122A.
She must maybe tell you our other 40B.
Fisherville. Fisherville Terrace, out on Main Street.
Okay. That's a fairly large development, isn't it? Won't that impact the traffic as well? Because a lot of those people will be using Pleasant Street. Does that add certainly potentially to that traffic count on Pleasant Street that we're not taking into account?
So our traffic study accounted for the 27 Upton Street. We included it in our annual growth rate, but that development was not identified. So that means that the other development would have to include us in their traffic study.
This is a project, though, that was permitted many years ago, and it just started to...
13 years ago.
It's under construction right now. So that should be included in the background growth.
Okay. It was, it was not identified.
I thought we talked about this at the last hearing.
Yeah, and I thought it was addressed.
Can you, Wendy, remind us?
Yep. Is that better?
Kevin, maybe, Kevin, did you look at that issue? Because I thought we talked about this at the last hearing, that they were going to revise their background growth, what do you call it, the other project growth?
Well, what I had commented on last month was that, you know, as any new residences, whether 40B or single-family homes get built in Grafton or in Sutton nearby, you know, any of that background traffic can be associated within the growth rate. And I believe, off the top of my head, I want to say they use 1% per year, which is on the conservative side and can accommodate for none of those trips. But I do not see that the other 100 units or so that was going to be part of that other project would materially change the findings if it was itemized within the report versus just being part of background growth. So I don't see that being different other than, you know, further establishing the needs for some of the things that we talked about this evening.
If I recall correctly, when we discussed it, I think it was determined, and correct me if I'm wrong, that it wasn't a significant driver of additional trips onto Pleasant Street.
Why wouldn't it be?
Because of the location on Main Street and alternate routes to...
Well, I know when I'm coming from that direction, I avoid Pleasant Street, because I live across 122 from Pleasant Street, off of Church Street. And I will go any way but a way that takes me to that intersection. So probably other people will do that, too.
Are there any other public comments specifically related to traffic? Are there any on the...
Nope.
All right. Well, thank you, Kevin.
Very welcome. Have a great evening, everybody.
Thank you. All right. So we will move on to Wetlands and the report from Art Allen from EcoTech.
Good evening. Arthur Allen from EcoTech, peer review consultant for the zoning board and longtime consultant for the Conservation Commission in Grafton. As noted, I submitted a report dated June 16, 2023, summarizing my findings and comments on the project. I reviewed... I reviewed the, uh, the project plans and background information as well as the scope of work that was requested. I walked the site on June 14, 2023 in preparation. And my findings are summarized in the report. I'll go through them. One of the questions I was asked was the focus on potential water quality impacts relative to the Grafton well and bylaw regulations. I'll note that the project will require a stormwater pollution prevention plan to be prepared and submitted and as well as a notice of intent through U.S. EPA under the NPDES construction general permit requirements. And that will set up both the, uh, the planning for erosion control and water quality protection as well as a regular schedule of reporting and documentation that will be provided by the developer. That's one kind of check and balance on water quality. Also, it appears that a, a DEP-compliant stormwater management system has been designed. Obviously, I'm not a professional engineer, so I'm not going to try to go into any detail on the stormwater plan. I'm sure your other consultants will do that, likely Jeff Walsh from Graves. An erosion control plan was submitted, shows the standard measures and practices. And again, that'll be, have to be supplemented by the SWIP or Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. It's also my understanding that there'll be no onsite sewage treatment, that a project will tie into municipal wastewater treatments. So there won't be the potential there for sanitary sewer impacts to ground or surface water quality or, or wetlands due to the sewage effluent. And based on those observations, it appears the project can be constructed without deleterious impacts to surface water, groundwater quality. I also considered wildlife habitat impacts and wildlife displacement. Project site consists largely of open meadow, hayfield in the westerly portion with a fringe of closed canopy woodland between the field and a existing wetland and pond to the east of the project. And clearly, a project will impact relatively common upland habitat, including wildlife displacement from the development areas. Arguably, the most significant impact is associated with wetland. Potential impact is associated with Wetland A. That's located in the southerly portion of the site. Wetland A is a mapped potential vernal pool, which makes the, the buffer zone to Wetland A and the vernal pool especially important. But this project is proposing a greater than 100-foot setback from that pool. And it's also my understanding that that portion of the property will be donated for conservation purposes. So that basically ensures, you know, the highest regulatory level of protection for that, for Wetland A and the associated vernal pool. So I certainly support that aspect. In terms of the other wetland, the easterly wetland, they're proposing work up to the 25-foot local wetland setback. That's, again, a bylaw requirement, which, you know, is not necessarily, or potentially could be waived as part of the, uh, the 40B project, but they are honoring that 25-foot setback requirement. So that's, that's basically, you know, what would be required if they were subject to the, to the wetland bylaw. In general, it just, it seems that the impacts to common, relatively undisturbed and wooded buffer zones with the conformance to the local setback, that that loss of the relatively common habitat would appear to be, you know, acceptable under the current rules and regulations. I reviewed the, uh, the waiver requests, and it appears the only request from waiver of the local well and bylaw would be relief from local fees and waiver from the stormwater management bylaw. And assuming the ZBA is reviewing, you know, through their consulting engineers and they're subject to the DEP stormwater requirements, this should not have a deleterious effect on wetlands. I reviewed the project site and the plans for accuracy of the wetland delineation and, and survey. All the wetland flags were in place and appeared to correspond to the planned locations. Found the wetland delineation to be accurate based on all of the parameters we reviewed for wetland delineation. I assume additional information will be submitted to document the delineation as part of their notice of intent with conservation. But that being said, I found that the delineation to be accurate. I reviewed the entire site for other undelineated well and resource areas. I did not find any and noted that there are no flood zones, streams, rivers, rare species, or certified vernal pools mapped on the property. I walked the entire perimeter of the site, transected throughout the site, and am satisfied that they've accurately identified all the wetland resource areas. Thank you.
Any comments or more questions?
I have a question.
Mr. Yeoman's.
I would like you to comment, if you would, on the infiltration basin, the large one at the bottom that abuts the, that butts the Grafton conservation land. There are two infiltration basins. Obviously, the smaller one flows into the larger one. That larger one, half of that is within the 100-foot buffer zone. What would, you know, I'm, you know, I get the vernal pool and the, the part that's being donated. The reason that's being donated is, you know, they, they have to be cognizant of that, that vernal pool. But I, I'd like you to comment a little bit more on a major infiltration basin being placed in a 100-foot buffer zone. Half of it is in the 100-foot buffer zone. And the change in elevation from the, the site base building being about 300 and, I think it was 323 feet. The road is 328 Pleasant Street, and the base of the rear building is 323. And the surface of the lake is 296. That major infiltration basin is in the, in the 100-foot buffin, 100-foot buffer zone. What consideration do you give to the change in elevation, which it's a serious change in elevation when you go from the road surface and then you drop down to the pond's surface, which is at 296? When do you see that, that slope? What kind of an impact does that slope have on the infiltration basin?
Understood. I mean, I, I would have to defer to the, you know, review engineer in terms of the design and efficacy of the stormwater system. Again, I'm not a, I'm not an engineer. I have, you know, no, no real expertise in stormwater management. But that being said, I mean, the basin is, basins are allowed within the buffer zone. They're commonly constructed in the buffer zone. As you know, you know, the discharge has to be proximate to a, to a receiving, you know, water or wetland, you know, for, for the basin to be effective. So, you know, it, it appears to be, you know, designed in an appropriate location, and it is permissible in that location. You know, through the Conservation Commission, there's no restrictions on them placing the basin in that area. But again, for the, you know, in terms of the elevations, the grades, the, the, the design and function of the system, I, I, I really am not qualified to, to opine on that, you know, that, that aspect. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may elaborate on that?
Please, Mr. Walsh.
This is Jeff Walsh with Graves Engineering, peer review consultant for the Zoning Board of Appeals. Our office, myself and one assistant, did review not only the site plans, but the hydrology calculations, stormwater basin designs, the drainage system design, all the computations that support that stormwater management documentation. To begin with, the, the soils are, in fact, conducive to groundwater infiltration, which they are proposing. The basins are to receive stormwater runoff from the project and from a few dis, two, three discharge points from the Pleasant Street drainage system. Those flows are now accounted for in the hydrology from the Pleasant Street drainage system. The stormwater does have the appropriate, we call them BMPs, best management practices. The different things such as a catch basin, such as a forbey at the beginning of an impoundment, open infiltration basins, any devices that are intended to treat stormwater. And the system is in place. It meets the Mast DEP stormwater standards. It meets the stormwater handbook with respect to guidelines and criteria Mast DEP puts forward for designing infiltration basins. For example, offset the groundwater so that there is treatment of the infiltrated water before it actually gets to the, the true groundwater. I can tell you, I spent a little more time with this since the last time I was before this board. There are, the beauty of this basin, if you will, its size, you know, it's, it's not unusual size, but many basins we see have a single outlet. And this design, as well as other design, another design that was put forward on a similar project in town, relies on multiple discharges from this one impoundment. So instead of putting all the stormwater being discharged from the basin at one point, there's four discharge points plus what's called, excuse me, an underdrain or a slow drain. That has a negligible amount of flow during a storm event. So there's four major discharges, I call major, 12-inch pipes discharging from the basin. Under a 25-year design storm, only two of those four basin, only two of those four pipes will discharge water. And because they're spread out, the water, by having multiple pipes, the water spreads out on the ground. Then there's a lot of friction between the water and the ground surface. And, and quite frankly, it, it's that reduction of velocity of the water, move it slowly where it won't be as erosive. I ran some numbers on, on possible flow rates. It's a trial and error type of process using hydraulic equations. But I got numbers anywhere between 1 point something and high five feet per second, which under most conditions, and the higher number was under 100-year storm event. I had to assume flow width. They had a total riprap apron of 64 feet. So their intention is to have the four discharge points spread out evenly on the 64 feet. Practically, it probably won't discharge, be discharged evenly across 64 feet. There are ways to accomplish that if necessary, if during construction, water tends to get concentrated. But with the spreading out of the flow, I don't expect the flow rates to be erosive between the discharge point of the basin and the water surface of the pond. I, I heard well and clear some concerns raised last, that was probably at two meetings ago. But nevertheless, I'm, I'm comfortable with the numbers that I ran. They weren't submitted by the applicants team, and I had to make some assumptions. But I, I think they were conservative assumptions. I, quite frankly, I was working with a 13% landslope, which is pretty steep and probably in order based upon what the topography was and the, and the water surface elevation that was on the plans. So what I'm telling you, Mr. Yeoman, is I, I didn't see anything out of the ordinary with this design. And, and yes, it is close to the wetland, but I, I'm glad that they are at least 25 feet away. That 25-foot buffer zone, in my opinion, is very important for shading of resource areas, habitat, you know, animal migration, what have you, to help support between the, the wetland and, and the uplands. That's, that's, that's what I have basically in a summary of my review of, of this infiltration basin near the pond.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from the board? Attorney Hill.
Thanks. Just real quick to Jeff, just while we're talking about the stormwater design. Just looking at the plan, I'm curious as to whether there's two test pits in each infiltration system. I don't see that. Is, do you know, Jeff, if that's, did they actually have two test pits in each, in each system?
I don't remember if they do or they don't, but there was test pitting throughout this end of the site sufficient and consistency between the, the test pit data that led me to believe, I don't expect any variations if, if there was, say, only one test pit specifically under the footprint of a particular basin.
Stormwater handbook requires two per basin, right?
You could be right. You could be right, but there was, it's not like they went out and did one or two holes throughout the site.
Okay.
There's, I am very comfortable with the, the soil data consistency in the modeling and so forth, and the modeling represents what they show at the site.
Okay. And then to, to Mr. Allen, could, could you speak to whether you looked at any water quality impacts on the pond that Mr. Yeoman's just described? And I, I think, and I, I don't know if this is something you, you look at or if, if you don't. I mean, typically, it's a hydrologist or hydrogeologist that kind of investigates, you know, water quality impacts. But given that this infiltration system is, I think, going to be taking up most of the road runoff from the project, or a big chunk of it, is there a concern about phosphorus loading into the pond or loading of other nutrients that might affect the water quality of, of the pond? Especially given the topography that we talked about, the fact that these four outlets are, are basically 25 feet setback from the wetland, and, and the wetland is right up against the pond itself?
Yeah, again, I mean, it, you know, I defer to, defer to Jeff, but I mean, it's, it's a DEP-compliant system. So, so I mean, they, they meet the requirements. The presumption is, you know, with the, with the pretreatment and, and infiltration and, you know, the discharge characteristics and the setback, I mean, the presumption is that it will, the stormwater system will not degrade the water quality. I, I mean, I, I can't really go beyond what, you know, speculate beyond what the, what the design is. I mean, if, you know, given, given that they've, they have a compliant design, the assumption is that it, it. it protects the quality of water within the wetlands.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, to pick up where Mr. Allen left off, yes, we, as part of our stormwater management review, and I, when I say stormwater management, treatment, recharge, so on and so forth. Without a doubt, they have to meet the Mass DEP stormwater standards because even a 40B, if they have to file a notice of intent, which this project does, they have to meet the standards as, as part of meeting the, the regulations associated with the notice of intent filing with, under the Wetlands Protection Act. Beyond that, Grafton has local stormwater regulations. The call for these, and these came about, and I see these almost word for word from community to community, they came about from regulations passed down from the federal government, imposed on the states, the states impose them on the towns. And it, a few of the big things that are in those regulations, including Grafton, beyond the 80% total suspended solids removal requirement that Mass DEP requires, these local regulations now require 90%. The project does actually meet that. They don't need to request a waiver from the local regulations for that. With respect to total phosphorus, they need to meet 60% total phosphorus removal under the local stormwater regulations. There's a few different ways to demonstrate that they can do that. One of the ways to demonstrate is they, they can take one inch of runoff from the paved areas, all the parking lot areas, and retain, the wording I think is retain it in, in the infiltration basin, basically not allow the first one inch of rainfall to be released. They exceed that and then some. So they meet the, the local stormwater, the Grafton stormwater regulations with respect to total phosphorus removal. Another big thing in the local stormwater regulations is using the, a higher rainfall amount than what is required under the Mass DEP notice of intent permitting. They've used that amount of rainfall as well. These are things that I think were in the original submittal, but I looked at them in greater detail earlier on when they were requesting waivers. Yeah, we want to waive the stormwater regulations. No, 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 which part of the stormwater regulations are we going to talk about? And when I go back into the, the important things, the more important things that I look at with respect to rainfall, runoff, treatment, and so on and so forth, they're compliant with the local regulations. In that, you know, it's, it's, I don't know how else without, you know, taking on a major research project, how else to go beyond this because, not to belabor the point, but in the, back to Mass DEP with their total suspended solids removal, you know, we think of total suspended solids, sand, grit, something like that. Well, if you read deep into the Mass DEP manual, they've used that as a method to account for all pollutants associated with traffic and so forth, normal traffic. And again, you get your dominimus oil drips, which are organic materials. You get your dominic, break linings coming off, metals and so on and so forth. It was a way to, you know, standardize it, if you will, in the industry. So if somebody brings a project forward and I have to report to a board such as this, do they, will they have an impact? My guideline, if you will, or my measuring pole is do they meet certain standards, whether it be Mass DEP standard or, or the more stringent local stormwater standards? And again, they're, they're compliant in both, both accounts.
Thank you.
Could I ask Jeff a question though on that?
Please.
So I don't understand how phosph, I don't understand how TSS can be a proxy for phosphorus when suspended solids are being taken out by things like oil and grit separators and coltech units and, and, I mean, storm separate units. Like phosphorus doesn't get captured by that stuff, doesn't it? Doesn't phosphorus just keep going through all the way to the, to the basin and then it gets infiltrated as well as taken up?
One, different materials will adsorb to different particles, if you will, based upon their, you know, the chemistry, if you will. Phosphorus will adsorb. It's dissolved, absolutely, but it also has an affinity to adsorb to certain things. A good way to remove phosphorus is biological uptake. Fertilizer, nitrogen, phosphorus, and potassium. Biological activity does help remove phosphorus. But back to the, the local regulations, it says if you can receive and retain, and of course, retain means, in my opinion, retain it sits there forever. It's a permanent pool of water. That's, that's not the case with infiltration basins, nor with the intent of, of the regulation for phosphorus, it's just the wording. But keeping that first flush of material, whether it's fertilizer that washed off the lawn or some that was spread onto the parking lot, the first flush, that one inch of runoff is, is what they're trying to capture because that's what's got most of the pollutant. Compared to a heavy, long rainfall, once the material's washed away, you got less dirty water, if you will, come into the drainage system. So to your point, does phosphorus stay completely polluted, dissolved and continue through the system? There would be adsorption, maybe onto some of the, and some uptake on the, on the grasses within the basin, maybe some discharge, I mean, uptake onto the sands, which had only occurred for so long. But again, the, the point is, the regulations, as I see it from community to community at the local level, retain one inch of runoff, not rainfall, one inch of runoff from the impervious areas.
But again, that, if the run-up is going into an inf, into an infiltration basin and that's not being retained, it's going to go into the ground.
That's right.
So ultimately, it will end up in the pond, won't it?
Through a filtering of the soil.
Filtering through the soil.
That's right. Compared to, and, and again, the, the one inch of retainage and infiltrating is, is to keep it from being discharged directly out the pipe and ready directly into the water.
Right.
That, that's how I see it. I'm trying to look at it and explain it in layman's terms and having suffered through a lot of wastewater treatment and water treatment over the years.
So I, I'm not sure who can answer this question, but what's the role of the, the Conservation Commission?
To administer the Wetlands Protection Act, which is a state regulation, which this board has no jurisdiction over, the Wetlands Protection Act.
So there's going to be a further review by the Conservation Commission?
Absolutely. Under the Notice of Intent filing.
And I assume they would do a fir, a, a deeper dive. Mr. McCusker, you may have the answer to this.
Well, I, I was, you know, I, first of all, I agree with what Jeff said, but the Conservation Commission, just like all of the other boards and commissions in town, also have a responsibility to provide input to this board. And if there was concern, you know, I, I think in a general sense, Mr. Allen has talked about the DEP standards and, and Jeff's gone a little further and talked about our local standards. But, you know, I, I think we, hopefully, we can all agree that none of these standards are an end-all, be-all, right? And there could be other issues beyond those. And I think that's kind of what Dan was driving at. You know, yeah, maybe they meet all these standards, but there's still this huge body of water that, down there, and it may or may not be affected by this development. If there are things that we could ask of the applicant to help minimize any other impacts, I think it's up to the Conservation Commission really to step forward and say, hey, you know, if you guys could have them do X, Y, and Z, that would be really good for this reason. But I think it's, you know, I think that's their other role, is, is to step forward and say those sorts of things. Just like it's, you know, it's, it's the police chief's role to step forward and say things about safety and the fire to say things, you know, et cetera. I think that, you know, we're, we, we represent all of these boards and, and they've got to step forward and say things. So that's the other really important thing that they have here, and I don't think they, I don't, I don't think we've heard from them, and they may not even realize that, that, you know, that sort of input is what we need from them.
Trump.
Yeah. Maybe I can just provide a little bit of clarity. So we did file a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission. Steve O'Connell from Turning Point had a meeting with them last week. At first glance, they didn't have any issues that they raised to us. They were looking for a follow-up letter from Jeff regarding the stormwater system. So that will be provided to them and we're waiting for a DEP number. So we have filed with them. They are aware of this project. And in addition, Hart Allen's letter was provided within that notice of intent so that they have all the information. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, I, I think, if I may, just shed some light on, on the, the regulatory process and just to picking up where, where Bill left off. It, there is, the Conservation Commission is confined by their own jurisdictional boundaries, right? And so they, they can only act within their, their authority under the State Well and Protection Act, which does not generally protect groundwater resources, nor does it typically protect water quality from, you know, for ponds that aren't Class A or outstanding resource waters. I mean, to, to an extent. I mean, there are, there are the stormwater standards, and the stormwater standards do contain things like TSS, total suspended solid removal performance standards. There are performance standards for, for other things. But in the scientific community, it's pretty well understood that there are limitations on, on what the stormwater standards, how far they go. And we have ponds and lakes across the Commonwealth that are eutrophied from nitrogen and phosphorus loading that isn't prohibited. And so I think that's, that's a concern, as well as the fact that we're in a Zone 2 of a public water supply well in Grafton. This land is within the Zone 2 of the, of Grafton's wellhead area. So I think there's a kind of a confluence of concerns that state law is actually inadequate to protect. And that's why towns adopt more stringent local bylaws, border health bylaws, conservation bylaws. And, you know, we have a stormwater bylaw that is more strict than, than state law that, that helps. But there's only so much the Conservation Commission's going to say because their, their jurisdiction is limited, just like ours is. But yet, this is a concern. And there are gaps in the regulatory framework, both at the local and state level. And this is, this is just one issue that it's hard for us to evaluate without having really any scientific analysis. Like the, the way you'd really analyze this is by having essentially a nutrient, nutrient loading analysis. You have somebody say, all right, this is what I'm predicting the amount of phosphorus to be and nitrogen and whatever other bad stuff is going to end up in this centralized infiltration area. And I think that's kind of where the concern's coming from, is that all of this is now being centralized in one big basin that's right up against the wetland. Like under, under current conditions, obviously, there's no development there. So all the rainwater just infiltrates. But now we're talking about a concentration of, of water that is somewhat treated, but not perfectly treated. And then what's, what's in that water and where is that, how fast is it going to go to the pond and what concentrations are the pollutants going to end up in the pond? I don't, none of us here today can say whether or not it's a problem or not. But I think it's just an issue that has popped up and I've had some conversations with some members about, about this issue. And anyway, it's just out there.
Well, I mean, I, thank you for that. And I guess my question would be, or my comment is, is there any town employee or town agency or board committee that has any oversight over the wellhead issue? Or, you know, as a volunteer board, we're not educated in these things. We can ask for comments and, you know, seek information. But, you know, without, you know, others' experience in this, you know, we're, myself, you know.
So on the wellhead issue, so the, the town of Grafton does have a Water Resource Protection zoning bylaw. It, it's, there's a section in the zoning bylaw that regulates uses of land within the Zone 2, which this, this property is located. But that bylaw does not restrict this kind of project. It doesn't restrict septic systems. It doesn't restrict stormwater systems. And it's, it only restricts really bad things like, you know, you know, plants, like wastewater treatment plants or junkyards or gas stations, you know, things that are really significant threats to water quality. The area right around the well is a Zone A, and that, that would be, or, or Zone 1?
Zone, yeah.
Zone 1.
Public waters, for, for wells.
Yeah, for surface waters, it's Zone A.
That's correct.
For wells, it's Zone 1s. That's, I think, a 400-foot radius around the well.
It's based upon flow, but generally speaking, it's 400 foot for a larger well like what's in South Grafton and North Grafton water districts.
So those are, requirements are more strict. But for this Zone 2, it's, there's not a lot of regulation as to what can happen. And so to answer your question, there's not, there's no one in town that's going to say, hey, you know, here's the concern with our well. I mean, the, the water district might say, you know, we'd like to know what's going on in the Zone 2s, but I think that's all you're going to get.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, to elaborate on that. The local water supply protection overlay regulations certainly speak to uses of land that would be a pollutant generator, if you will, and be a threat to public water supply, such as, you know, septic disposal and so on and so forth. The, the regulations also speak to the impervious cover. And I reviewed the hydrology computations with respect to impervious cover. And quite frankly, the volume of wa, uh, stormwater that's being discharged post-development is not substantially different than pre-development. And it probably is less, but I, don't quote me on that because I don't remember. Having reviewed a number of projects in Grafton, any of them that fall within water supply protection overlay district and go over the threshold of amount of pervious cover, then I start taking a look at, at the, at the stormwater. The hydrology calculations, not for peak rates, but for volumes. Lastly, with respect to, and to Dan's point, the board probably has some jurisdiction under the local stormwater regulations to impose conditions if it sees fit with respect to protecting the quality of the water in the pond by way of limiting the amount of pollutants that potentially would end up in the stormwater. And by way of that, I'm speaking of source control, the source of the pollutants that even enter the stormwater. For example, limited use of fertilizers on lawns, prohibition on car washing, which I would think at a facility like this, the operator of the facility, once it's built out, doesn't want car washing, car repairs and so on and so forth, to occur in the parking lot. Policing of the area, that would be more for trash and things like that. But anything associated with chemical use that could get into the ground, those are the types of prohibitions or limitations that potentially could be opposed. But quite frankly, I envision a facility like this already having things like that in place in their rental lease agreements.
Mr. Morgan?
Just for the record, for the zone, I, I think it's 726 acres we're talking about?
736.
730, oh, so close. 736 acres in town. So it makes up a lot of people's homes in the vicinity area. It also includes industrial, commercial buildings, existing uses, gas, you know, car, car, car washes, gas stations, that's already previously located in the zone. Just a technical detail, further saying why we're, why we're even better, is one of the pollutants, not just septic systems, which we're not doing, is also heating by oil. So a lot of people now, you know, there's not a lot of gas in town, they have oil tanks. The oil tanks are in the basement, which could leak into your ground too. The good thing about us is we're fully doing all electric. So A, you don't have onsite septic systems. B, we have BMP best management practices for dealing with stormwater to remove phosphorus, stuff like that. Then we also have the sewer, which is obviously going downtown, and we're heating by electric. So those are one of the three or four main ones that's actually in your bylaw, and we, we're adhering to those. But if it feels any, any better, I can definitely put in a, a condition in our operational maintenance plan that will use low phosphorus fertilizers for fertilizing the landscaping for open space and landscaping activities in our manuals for the apartment complex.
I have a question for Jeff.
Mr. Yeomanz?
Just to follow on to, on your report, Jeff, point 19 talks about the frontage on Pleasant Street. It presently drains into the lot and it goes across the lot, goes down, water penetrates down. But, so it's, it's filtered. Now, we're going to have a curb along. Now, we're going to have a curb along Pleasant Street. So, we're now going to catch all of that water. And the point you make in 19, that you asked them, you noticed that, and you asked them to recalculate that. So, the post-development hydrology computations were revised to account for that stormwater. But basically, we're going from stormwater that was flowing off of Pleasant Street across a field sloping down, naturally flowing, whatever it does.
Yep.
And now, we're basically capturing all of that road runoff, and we're adding it to the waste, the stormwater flow within the development, which goes into Basin 1, which flows into Basin 2. And, you know, I've got a couple of questions, but I think, you know, I think that that's an issue. I mean, that's a change in the type of water that has naturally flowed over this land that, you know, it's a dramatic change. So, we're capturing all of that road runoff, and we're putting it into the basins. That's where it's ending up. And the other question I have, just explain, some people have asked me, the monitoring well. There's a monitoring well in each of these basins. What's the use of that, and how is that tested?
I'll start with the monitoring well. The whole idea of the monitoring well is to be able to take the cover off in using a probe or tape measure and a flashlight if you have to, but there are electronic probes that'll do the same thing, to know where the water level is, and to know the elevation. And you can compare it back to the elevation of the bottom of the pond, to know whether or not the pond, the groundwater is swelling up under the pond, or it's not draining down in that area. The whole idea is to have the bottom of the infiltration basin higher than the groundwater elevation. The monitoring well gives you the ability to know what the groundwater elevation is. That's that purpose. With respect to the stormwater runoff, and my comment number 19 had to do originally with the hydrology calculations. In the first submittal, there was, this has to do with the runoff, number 19 specifically. And I want to go on beyond that to talk about runoff from the other side of the road that's on the project side. But number 19 had to do with runoff that enters a drainage system on the opposite side of the road from the project and is piped today under the road and discharges to the field. And my point with number 19, because the original submittal in the revised plans proposed to let it flow on the ground for some distance, and then put it into the drainage system that is being proposed for the site, the hydrology calculations had to account for the flow originating across the street. In the first submittal, it did not. I needed to know, you know, is there enough capacity? Finally, with respect to water runoff from the road, Pleasant Street, that's discharged either to the opposite side and flows by a pipe under the street, or comes, right now, it comes off the edge of the pavement on, from the crown of the road over to the project side. And usually, not always, because the abutter has some water issues, but usually dissipates. When I was in the project at the end of April, there was still water being discharged from the drainage pipe that originates across the street. And within about, I think, 50 to 75 feet in either direction I walked from the pipe, there was no more water on the ground. The point, to your point, Mr. Yomans, the water came across the street and infiltrates. And now, they're proposing to put it in a pipe, well, put it into their drainage system. First of all, it's not going directly into a pipe, there will be some overland flow, some opportunity for infiltration. But ultimately, what they're doing is they are bringing it across the site. And to finalize my comments, you know, the board's worked with me, and I've worked with the board for a number of years. And I've told other clients this and other developers. I don't care if a project gets submitted, I don't care if a project gets approved, I don't care if the project gets constructed. My job is to look at the engineering components that I'm charged with and report back to the board. Does it meet regulations, if I got a review against regulations? Does it meet the standards in the industry as I know them? And that's my job to you, and the board's here to make a decision. So, please don't feel I'm advocating for or against this project or any other project. I'm doing my best to give you the facts as I know them, from my experience doing this in many communities.
Any other comments or questions on the board?
How much phosphorus and nitrogen do you think the farmer used to put down when he grew corn there that nobody cared about?
A whole lot more.
Yeah.
Yeah. And there are, to Dan's point, there are calculations where you can look at for land development, loading of phosphorus-generated, believe it or not, a little bit in the rainfall, at least you're supposed to account for it. Septic systems, lawns, and so on and so forth. There's some generalized numbers you can use. And, you know, could go through that exercise. But again, you know, I think the regulations that were forced upon the local communities with the 60% total phosphorus removal really tried to standardize it, if you will. You can have a detailed review, but my concerns here are how much nitrogen and phosphorus is generated on the site. And again, no wastewater disposal, so it comes back to land use, fertilizing and so forth. And how much recharge is occurring on the site post-development compared to pre-development? That kind of keeps the, you know, the concentration, if you will, of those materials in the groundwater pretty much balanced. Can't take away the water, leave the phosphorus there and take away the water, the concentration goes up.
And the recharge is balanced.
And the recharge is balanced, I'm very comfortable with the recharge.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? This is.
Please.
When we talk about rainfall, do we take into consideration that we are now experiencing more rainfall, increased rainfall, larger storms? Do we take that into consideration, or should we take that into consideration?
It is now being taken into consideration under local stormwater regulation because they require rainfall amounts, I'll use a number for 100-year storm event. When we talk about these hydrology calculations, it's a storm event that, rainfall occurs for 24 hours. It's not continued, the intensity isn't continuous through the whole time. It starts off slow, gets really intense in the middle, and slows down. But we talk about total rainfall during that 24 hours. Under the Mass DEP regulations, they're still using something called Technical Paper 40, which was published in the 1960s and had data through the 1960s. For 100-year storm event, that's using about 6.6 inches, 6.7 inches of rainfall. Under the local regulations, they require what's called NRCC. It's, Cornell University collects rainfall data, just like the National Oceanic and Atmospheric Administration, NOAA does. I think from the same rain stations, NOAA reports it a little differently, but that's a federal agency. So, some communities require NOAA because that's federal government. That's continuously getting updated. That's taken rainfall data that occurred before the 60s and still building upon it. For the NRCC number, instead of 6.8 inches, we're talking about 8.6 or 8.7 inches of rainfall. So, two more inches of rainfall, another 25% above what, give or take, what the Wetlands Protection Act calls for. That's about as good as it's going to get right now. And NOAA's a little bit lower than NRCC. It's the same rainfall data, they just, I believe everything there is lumped together into one day of rainfall, whether it's a reporting station that only gives you one amount of rainfall per 24-hour period, or in a case of NRCC, breaks it into those, as well as some of the reporting stations that have reporting frequencies every 15 minutes, every 30 minutes, or so forth. So, that a rainfall event that occurs for 24 hours and goes through the midnight hour is picked up much better on NRCC than it is under NOAA. You're welcome.
And just along those lines, for the, there's been a lot of discussion about Fisherville. And I know that the last week, driven through there, and there's been no further flooding issues that I've seen.
Glad to hear it, the drainage system's in, the weir is in, I owe you a couple of site visit reports, the 30-inch pipe went in, I was very comfortable. I happened to be there the day after this meeting. I'm very comfortable with what happened in Main Street since the meeting we were here at and what occurred a few weeks ago. I've got something in writing for you on those.
So far, so good. Any other?
Let me present this.
Sure, Mr. Yomans.
Yeah, I'd like to just review the presentation that I put together. If you could pull that up, Katrina, please. Thank you. That's a familiar picture, that's just the starting point. As I have spent some time over the last few weeks, I looked at the previous meetings that I always try to do because if I've missed something, I like to go back and try to capture what I've missed. And I thought, as I held up these two pieces of paper, and I raised the issue of the parcel being in the wellhead protection area, Zone 2. And I said to myself that this one sheet is not going to be adequate for me to understand the issue that I'm concerned about. And the second sheet that I held up was this, which was just grabbed from your graphics, talking about the waterfront, the buffer zones, the 100-foot, 50-foot, and then the 25-foot. If you would go to Sheet 2 there, Katrina. And the point, and I'm going to go through this quickly because we've, I've discussed it before. But Grafton's only public water supply are wells. Whether it's a public water service, or whether you have a well in your backyard, we're all dealing with the same draw and the same aquifers. But wells are the town's only source of water. And if you look at, what I did is, I took their graphic, and I see that they have it here, and I superimposed it on a GIS map. And if you look at Pleasant Street, it's a 12.51-acre lot. The building site is 7.71 acres. The back lot is going to be donated to the town if this is approved by the ZBA. The project's building site has 41%, of impervious surface. It's 3.19 acres. And these calculations are taken from your engineer's main sheet. And the product, if you look at the project and the impervious surface of it for the whole project, for the whole acreage, it's 25.51. I happen to view the, your initial filing for the notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, and Steve used that 25.1 figure to, when he was asked by the Chair of the Conservation Commission. And I was rather surprised by that response because the impacted site is going to be the building site of the 7.71 acres. And to me, the impervious surface, which, and it's the same amount of impervious surface that the project creates. And it should be using that 42%, or let's round it down to 41%. So, that's, that was surprising to me. And, you know, I think that that should be corrected when you go to the Conservation Commission again. I'm going to read the bottom part of it. It abuts 22 acres of state and Grafton Conservation Wetlands. And you can see on the map there, and then the map here. The, and it totally resides within a 736-acre wellhead protection area, Zone 2. A Zone 2 is, is and was defined by hydrogeologic modeling, then reviewed and approved by the Mass DEP, Department of Environmental Protections, and reviewed and approved by the Drinking Water Program. The Zone 2 was developed to protect the recharge aquifer for the Grafton Water District's Trinity Ave well. So, we're talking about a protection of a well. And if you go to page 3, Katrina, there's the wellhead protection area, Zone 2. And I pulled this off of GIS. And yes, I can agree with the applicant. And if you look at the 59 Pleasant Street project site, and then you look at the bottom, which is the location of the Trinity Ave well, in relationship percentage-wise to the overall project, it's, you know, it's small. But we're talking about something here that, I'm looking at this, and I'm saying, this is the recharge aquifer for a major well for the Grafton Water District. And I raised it as a concern, and I spent an awful lot of time over the past few weeks since the last meeting in June. Matter of fact, my wife accused me of having, was I doing a thesis for a doctorate? And I said, "No, I'm just trying to be more aware of just what is the issue and what is the impact." And I defer to some of Jeff's comments. He is there as the eyes and ears. But in looking at this and thinking about where this project is going to be sitting beside a lake, a small, it's not a lake, it's a small pond. But this was originally designed as a wellhead protection area. And it's, you know, it's very well-defined. And why did they do this? And they do it because the area of an aquifer that contributes water to a well under the most severe pumping and recharge conditions that can be realistically anticipated. 180 days of pumping at approved yields with no recharge from precipitation. And I beg to differ with your comment, it's not a small impact. We're talking a site that by right could accommodate, I think it was 11 housing units, maybe you'd get a few more with a 40B. But we're putting 104 homes, rental housing units, in four buildings. And this project, to my mind, is creating a parking lot of 3.19 acres that's going into this field. And it's the field in the front that should be measured and always looked at. So, you can't look at the whole parcel and say that, as Steve said at the meeting, at the notice of intent, that it's like 21%. It's not 21%, it's 42%, it's 41.41%. So, I, you know, I continue to have a problem with this, with this site being in a wellhead protection area, Zone 2. And this was well thought out. This had to go to DEP, it had to be approved by them, it had to be reviewed by them. And now, all of a sudden, some decade- And now, all of a sudden, some decades later, we're sitting here and saying, it doesn't matter? It does matter. And I think it matters a lot. And that's why I spend so much time with it. Go to Page 4, please. And Page 4, I pulled this because after viewing Steve's comments at the NOI meeting, at the conservation, he talked about the porosity of the soil. And it's a great field. It's a field that drains well. It's a great field to build a house in, or two, or three, or maybe 11. But it's, I don't think it's the same impact that you get when you put 104-unit apartment buildings on this plot of land. And one of the things I looked at is, if you look at all of the test wells, the test pits that were dug, and you look over to the results, it's very sandy, it's sandy loam, it's sandy soil. It's very porous and very conducive to draining well and to recharge an area. So, you know, I think that it ties into my concern. And if you go to Page 5, and what I tried to look at is a snapshot. And this graphic, by the way, is pulled from your plan sheet, C-5-0. And if you look at the upper left-hand corner, that just reinforces, you know, my thought. It's 3.19 acres of lot coverage, impervious surface. And that, if you look at the stormwater in the lower-left column, you can see on the bottom, the stormwater is captured, it flows into Basin 1, then it flows into Basin 2. And I can't argue with Jeff's, you know, review of it. It's well-engineered. I don't debate the engineering effect of it. But I'm concerned that we're being asked to look at a project that is in an aquifer that contributes to the Trinity Ave well. And I dare say, if you talk to people over in that area, those people just spent an hour and a half at a Board of Selectments meeting complaining about brown water. And, you know, they're drinking water. And think of that, when you get up in the morning and you grab their first glass of water. I watched that meeting as well. As my wife said, I have a lot of time on my hands. I can watch all the meetings. But I was just, I was amazed and the frustration of these people. And I'm thinking, wait a minute, this is an aquifer that's not just for the well, and it's for everybody. So, I mean, this continues to be a concern in my mind. And it, all of the things that are said hold true. The design is well-designed, but I still think that it's going to have an impact on the aquifer beneath it that's been accustomed to draining into this field of 7.71 acres and going down into that aquifer. And now what we've got is a containment of a parking lot of 3.19 acres over this very porous aquifer. And your engineer described it, when asked about the soil on this site, he said it's which is great for a developer, but it's also great for draining and recharging an aquifer. So I, in, the final thing that I came to the attention, as I'm looking at this recharge aquifer, and I'm looking at the wellhead protection zone, is that it's also within the Section 7 of our zoning bylaws, it's within the water supply protection overlay district. That simply means that that overlay district, that takes precedent, but it doesn't eliminate the underlying, you know, the underlying conditions or terms and conditions. It's another set. And if you look at that overlay district, and this is something that we talk about constantly on just basic variances. You know, what's the effect? How much have you increased the impervious surface in the overlay district? And if it's increased by too much, we deny the permit. And this is someone, you know, asking to put an addition on a house or to build a house. And there would be forests for variance. So, you know, I spent, I feel in serving this board, I'm responsible to do a certain amount of due diligence. And as I've said to my fellow board members, I'm gainfully unemployed. I have nothing to do but to take care of the things around the house and to spend, you know, two or three weeks trying to become better educated about the impact of water. And I have less time to drink this water in this town than everybody in this room. You have much more time that you're going to be spending with this decision. So I'm concerned about it. I continue to be concerned about it. And I, I don't know what I'm thinking now, but I just wanted to express my frustration in that we're kind of looking at this. And I started when I, after the last meeting, when I went home with this sheet. And I said, why did they put in this wellhead protection zone? Because they want to recharge the aquifer. And we're not putting up a gas station here. I understand that. We're not putting in sewage. But we are taking a pristine piece of land and we're covering it up with a 3-plus-acre parking lot. And I think that there are other alternatives that we, that you should look at. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Rickusker.
Thank you. A few comments. First of all, you know, I want to thank Mr. Yeomanz for his passion and the effort he puts into this. It's, you know, it's valuable information. But I have a few comments. I, you know, there was a lot of concern expressed about recharging the aquifer. To the best of my knowledge, and Jeff can correct me, you know, all of the water that's falling on the site is being contained and processed and discharged on the site. It's not like we're shipping the water off to, you know, some remote location. So, you know, to the best of my knowledge, every drop of water that falls on the site today goes down, that, you know, goes down into the aquifer, is still going to make its way down into the aquifer if the project is built. And Jeff, you can disagree with me afterwards if I've got that wrong.
We're in the same ballpark, Bill. Maybe a little difference in the details on bigger storms, but most of, you're right, most of it gets recharged.
Yep. To Katrina, did the Grafton Water District, are they on the list?
Yes, I hand-delivered the whole packet to them.
Okay. All right. I would feel a lot more, I would be more concerned about the wellhead if the Grafton Water District were voicing these concerns. So they're aware of it. It's their wells. They're the ones responsible for delivering the clean water. If there's a problem with this development in that zone, seems like they're the ones who need to be bringing it up, and they haven't. So, you know, let's keep that in mind. Mr. Yeomanz, a little surprised that you brought up the brown water. You know, you watch the meeting, you know that it's an operational issue that the Grafton Water District has. I agree. I'm very sympathetic to the folks in those neighborhoods. I mean, I've experienced actually in my neighborhood as well in the past. Thank God, it's been, it's been a while since I have, but it's terrible. It's just no way to live, you know, and quite frankly, I think the Grafton Water District should be ashamed themselves. It's a terrible situation. But to try to tie that operational issue to what's going on here, I, come on. That's just really, I think, being alarmist, and I don't think we need to really be doing that. And then just as a point of clarification, it's the special permits where the zoning Board of Appeals needs to take into consideration the water protection overlay district. And we don't necessarily deny permits. If there's an increase of 50% of the impervious area, we're allowed to then, or we're supposed to include conditions to mitigate any effects to the groundwater. So, you know, I think there was a time when we've, have in the past mistakenly denied, but the way that section is written, you know, we're supposed to provide mitigation or, you know, have the applicant provide the mitigation for any groundwater concern. So I appreciate Mr. Yeomanz's effort and what he's had to say, but at the end of the day, if the Grafton Water District isn't stepping up and expressing concern over the impact to their wells, to their aquifer, I don't see where the ZBA should be stepping forward and making those claims.
Right. And through the chair, if I may, this is Clay Williams with Eastland Partners. You know, on that point of the Grafton Water District, there is a report called a SWAP report, which is based on the Zone 2 wellhead protection district. And that stands for Source Water Assessment and Protection Report. And it talks about, you know, potential issues and problem uses. You know, Chad already mentioned the four things that are a concern with residential development that the reserve at Pleasant Commons just isn't going to have. It goes forward to list, you know, different land uses and their threat level. And for this Zone 2, a car wash is listed as a low threat. You know, a high-threat and regulated industry would be concrete, gas stations, and, you know, fuel oil manufacturing. I think, you know, it may seem that it's going to be a big impact because it's new impervious surfaces, but, you know, we spent so much time talking about stormwater management that all of that recharge and treatment that comes from rainfall with new impervious surfaces really won't be an issue. I think, you know, if there were serious concerns from the Water District, we would have heard those. I know that we've talked with Matt Pearson about this project specifically. So, you know, I just wanted to make that point known.
Thank you. Any comments, questions on board? Is there anyone from the public that would like to comment?
Wendy Reed, 14 Coventry Road, I don't think we should dismiss what Mr. Yeomanz has said. That field acts as a filter, as it is now. And when you cover part of it, it's not, you're not going to have the benefit of that. And I think that's an important thing. Climate change is causing New England to have great deluges of downpours, followed by long periods of drought. So we're going to have to look a little differently at how we manage stormwater drainage, too. Now, this is predictions from experts. It may not come to pass, but it certainly is looking that way. So I think we also have to take that into consideration. That's going to have to change our water management approaches in the future. But I don't think we should dismiss what he, I think you brought up a lot of really important points, and I don't think we can just ignore that. Thank you.
And just to respond to that, I don't think it's, no one's dismissing it, but I think in the context of this board's role in reviewing this application, you know, I don't know in a 40B that, that type of, you know, global impact and global warming type, you know, macro changes are something that we'd be able to rely on to, you know, deny a project. And I think, based on the stormwater and everything else we've heard about that, that it's, you know, being addressed to the best that it can be, you know, with as minimal impact as it can be, you know, based on what I've heard and my opinion. Any other comments from public?
Eric Solomon, 11 Sherrill, kind of like Bill's kind of take on things. I don't really know how much we can really have an impact on the progress of this development. Grafton Water District, as far as like more in line with future stuff, like some of the issues we're experiencing with the brown water seem to be a capacity issue. So I'd like their input, just to know, like, hey, we keep on putting all these new developments in, we're having capacity issues, like some sort of reinforcement from them that we have capacity to grow.
That's a, that's a good point. And it, that is something I would hope that they would comment on.
I deliver everything to them. It's kind of like the school department.
It's hard to get ahold of them, it seems.
You need to come up here, sir. Sorry.
Sorry. Yeah, it seems like it's hard to get ahold of them. I missed the other meeting for lack of notification.
I mean, I hand-deliver it to the secretary down in the department.
Yep.
I tell them we need comments.
Yep.
They know when we have meetings. Like I said, it's like the school department. They get it delivered to, and everybody comments about it's going to increase the population in the school. We don't get comments from the school department either.
Yeah, that's another one.
It's not like I can chase them. It's up to them to give us comments if they have concerns.
Is it my, I'm still kind of new to town. Is it my understanding that the Grafton Water District is a separate entity from the town?
It's their own entity. Yep. It is not part of the town.
What do we have as, you know, town members to be able to hold them accountable for the service that they do provide?
I have no idea. You'd have to go to their meetings, I guess. They do have monthly meetings.
It's going to be one at 7:30 in the morning, so I'm going to have to find a way to make it.
Yeah, in the morning, yeah, because they're not affiliated with the town, is my guess. But I have pictures today. I have a reverse osmosis system. I pulled out pre-filter on it. I have pictures and stuff documenting. I work as a pipe fitter. I work with, you know, commercial buildings mostly. These things should last like three to six months. I'm on my fourth one in like a month and a half. Yeah, it's, and I have it documented. I have pictures. It's not making it up. I'm concerned. This makes me more concerned, just, you know, we're adding 200 more people utilizing the system that they're, one of their explanations was that we are overdrawing, and that's what's causing the issue.
Well, they did, they did have a pump go down.
Sure.
So it's overdrawing on what current wells are working.
And it's more, I'd like them to address the board with regard to this, whether it's live or.
I mean, I can reach, I can reach out to them again. I can reach out to Matt Pearson. But like I said, they get presented everything. They know that they, you know, can give us comments and.
We did get comments at the beginning.
Yeah.
Their comment was that they had no comments.
Right.
Yeah, pretty much.
I mean, they said a couple. It wasn't nothing, really.
No.
Through the chair, if I may, we have a will-serv letter from the Grafton Water District indicating that they have adequate capacity and pressure at Pleasant Street to service the project. You know, so like bringing that back to the context of the reserve at Pleasant Commons. In their eyes, they don't, you know, they don't see any issues. I understand your concerns, and they're totally reasonable.
Do we have that?
I think it was provided in the application, yeah.
I'll have to look through the application.
Is this, is this project site in the same neighborhood that has the problems with the brown water?
I'm on 11 Sherrill. I'm right off Pleasant. It seems I'm on eleven Cheryl. I'm right off Pleasant. It seems to be.
I mean, I'm up at McGill. I have it too. I mean, it's whoever.
Yeah, I I I think it's, I I would, I would consider it to be in the same neighborhood.
Well, that, I think that is a valid concern. I mean, I think we need to follow up with the Water District, understand what's going on, and is that gonna be a concern for this project?
So so, yeah, Dan, I think it it the Water District, I think, has been fairly clear in communicating that they've uh have an operational issue with one of their pumps. It was down. It's causing them to do uh pump and provide water through, you know, non-standard ways. Um and that's what's leading to the um, you know, the the sediment that's being found in the water. Uh and they insist that once this pump is fixed, and I guess actually they've communicated that it is fixed now, uh they've got a few things to do and and the water should get clear. So that's why I refer to it as an operational issue. It's not necessarily a quality of the water to taken out of the ground issue. Um, you know, and and I'm not trying to defend them. I, to be honest, as I said, I I think it's terrible that um, you know, that that they're putting water into people's houses like that, but again, again, it's not the groundwater. That's the problem. It's the way that they're handling the water due to a a pump outage.
But I guess the question is, is the pump outage a function of overcapacity, or is it just a fluke? What's?
Oh, no, I I I don't know. You know, they're they have, you know, they've they've said that they've got enough capacity, et cetera, so I I don't know what to say about that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, there is a raised hand from an attendee, Scott Nowitzki. Go ahead, Scott.
Hi, everyone. Uh Scott Nowitzki, forty-nine Pleasant Street. Just on the topic of water. Um I submitted my original comments, um I believe back on March twentieth, and my third point, uh my second point was around brown water. This is before the operational issue that you're referencing. I think everyone in this neighborhood uh is very clear that this has been happening well before uh this claim of an operational issue. There's something going on with the pipe that runs down and feeds these neighborhoods. I'm on fifteen, forty-nine Pleasant Street, on the opposite side of the field, um and I have the issues. I know my neighbors have the issues eh on my shared driveway, and the people on the opposite of this side of this field um in the Sunrise neighborhood have it as well, so it's clearly a issue with the pipe um with this brown water, and I I find it to be deeply dis disturbing. I think, Bill, you said it right, that they should be completely ashamed of themselves. Um their exact words are to let the water stand, and the sediment will drop to the bottom of the container, which will cause the water to clear, and then you can drink it. So, uh quite frankly, we can have the Water District come in, and I think that it's required of them at this point because it's a serious concern, and I know people in the neighborhood are definitely escalating above them since it isn't through the town. Um but I would take whatever they say with a grain of salt um at this point, given the guidance that they're giving to the people in town. Operational issue, I put my comments in well before that operational issue came about, um with many instances of 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 unclear brown water, so. That's all. Thank you.
Chair, if I may, I can second that comment. Before this operational issue, I had the same issue. I live northeast and around Pollard Corner, basically. I I had the exact same comment, just let the water sit. The sediment will get to the bottom and it should be fine. Um and it's just gotten worse, and sometimes it's fine and sometimes it's not. Um is there any other, like, if we can outsource something like this and talk to a water specialist or someone who could? Is that something that this board could do? I mean, like, similar how we do, like, traffic.
Yeah.
Well, we could, yeah. Um, Mr. Chairman, my experience with with this is when pumps go down and water starts flowing in a different direction or different velocities in the pipes, it gets to be scour and things like that. And that's probably what's being experienced with the Grafton Water District, where it's gone on for a a number of times. Trinity Trinity Air Pump Station is only a few years old. I don't know when it went online. Um I don't know how that affected their overall system and if it has increased the velocity of water in certain pipes that has caused the scour that has been seen even before the pump went down. But this, again, this is all water. Once it gets within the system, completely some, completely different than when we were talking about earlier with impacts, potential impacts to the environment and the water that becomes the source of the system.
Yeah, but I, I think the the concern is the capacity and the ability to service two hundred more or, you know, a hundred more uh units. I'm not sure who we would. I'm open to ideas.
Hey, you know, I I I I'm not aware of who we would bring in to review. Um the Water District, we we, that's not something we've ever done before, you know. I I think if we're concerned about it, we can bring the Water District, ask the Water District to come in um to speak to some of these issues. Um, you know, they'll they'll probably sit in front of us and say uh we have enough capacity. We're not concerned about that, which I I think they've already said. And then, you know, they'll probably repeat the same thing they've been saying about the brown water. Um, you know, and then I'm not sure where we go from there, if we can go anywhere from there. Um, I mean, I'm open for suggestions, but um, you know, I think it's, I think it starts with bringing them in if if we're concerned about it.
Because uh, in my mind, it's a, it's a service issue if there's water capacity to service additional homes. You know, whether or not this project was built, those issues remain, and, you know, approval or denial of this project would have no impact on that. Um I think if we're looking for some level of confidence that this project won't contribute to any worsening of that situation, I don't I don't know if that's some validation there. Mr. Yeoman?
Yeah, we brought in a uh a hydrologist on uh Wheeler Road when we were discussing sheet flow and and I raised the issue there. And uh Wheeler Road was not in a uh in a wellhead uh protection area, Zone Two, nor was it, nor was it in the overlay protection district. But we did, uh I I don't recall his name, Dan, do you?
But that, that's, I think, a different issue. We're talking about water once it's, you know, been within the the realm of the the water.
Right, we're talking about a water.
Distribution.
A distribution issue, exactly. A service distribution issue versus a hydrology issue, which is what we studied at at the Elmond Road Project, was a hydrology issue. And that, and we, and what we just discussed tonight was a hydrology issue, a water quality issue from the from the recharge of of runoff next to a pond. But with respect to the service issue, I I think, I think there's two, two, two components to this. Number one, is there is there going to be a service issue to the residents of this project? And that's within this board's jurisdiction. And then second, second, will this project cause any deterioration of the existing problem? Which it could, if you're taxing the capacity of a under, under-capacity system. I I think at the very least, we should be getting more information from the Water District or the or the town as to what this problem is, but it it sounds to me like it really hasn't been properly characterized, and there's, it it maybe there's not a report that typically in a situation like this, a Water District or a town would hire a water engineer and and study the issue and report the problem and come up with a solution. So I I don't know if that's happened. Sounds like it hasn't. Um so, you know, for, this board really should have that information before making any future decisions on on what to do after that. I mean, if if that report comes in, it might make sense for us to have somebody look at it like another engineer with water, water supply experience, but at this point, I think we need more information from the Water District as to what the issue is, and 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 maybe, maybe, maybe they've got a solution and a plan, and it's gonna be fixed in a year. Who knows, or or six months.
I don't know if brown water's our problem, though. I mean, I know it is if you're drinking it, but uh tonight, I don't think it's the board's problem. We've already got a letter that says the, we, they have enough water. I mean, we can hire all the consultants we want, I suppose, but then we're just spending money and a consultant's not gonna know how much water Grafton's got. The operators do. We've got like five wells, I think. I take exception to that. We, I think the benefit of getting a specialist in can look at the aquifer and can look at the recharge methodology of it, and I think that serves a useful purpose. And the comments that they made, you know, in March, and uh, you know, I'm I'm sorry I brought up the water quality issue because that, what I'm talking about is recharging into the aquifer and the effect it may have, that it may have on the existing pond that it abuts, so. I I do think we need more information. I agree, and I think that it should be from someone that is a specialist in in that area.
I think you need, I think you need, I think you need the Water District to be telling us what's going on. Uh and and the board does have jurisdiction because this project needs a water connection permit, and and this is a comprehensive permit that we issue, so we actually do step into the shoes of the Water District for any permits or licenses. So there is kind of broad jurisdiction. It's a public safety concern. Um but it seems to me like what we need now is better communication from the the district. And what, what impact at all this has on this project and whether the project has any impact on, on the service.
I mean, sometimes a picture's worth a thousand words. You know, just so you know, you're probably gonna need a good filtration system for this place with the capacity you're gonna be pumping.
I mean, maybe the town manager knows what's going on. I I, you know, I can't speak to what's going on in town.
It looks like a cherry drink.
It looks reddish.
Yeah, that's the.
Wow.
Yeah, they just, just let it settle, and you can drink it, they say. They they say it's safe, so.
Um, Mr. Nowitzki?
Yep, uh sorry, I was on mute. Um I I did have one other just question, um maybe not pertaining to stuff, but we still haven't seen, have we seen anything with regards to um the lighting on the site in terms of what that's gonna look like? Um I I know it's probably a topic for a future meeting, but um wanted to know if that's something that's been provided, or if we have plans to get something on what the, that will look like.
So, uh, I believe.
Yeah, I'll answer that one. This is Chad with Eastland. Uh the photometric plan should be available in the next two weeks, so. And we are, and we are doing dark sky compliant lighting methods and stuff like that, so, you know, that'll be submitted uh before the, probably the next meeting.
Right, thank you.
Later. Um, Mr. McCosker?
Yeah, I just wanna circle back to the 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 water issue. Um, you know, I I I think the next step would be to, you know, to invite the Water District to to come here. Uh but I I I maintain my prior position that, you know, if if they're not concerned about the recharge um issues, um, you know, I I don't think it's up to us to 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 suddenly be, you know, become concerned about it. Um, you know, they're they're well aware of it. Um, you know, I know sometimes other boards get our, um, you know, get get comprehensive permits, and maybe they don't quite realize what their role is, so you know, to bring them in uh and have a conversation or invite them so we can have that conversation, make sure they're aware that uh if there are concerns, that this board is the one that can deal with it. Uh but, you know, until they raise their hand and say they're concerned about the recharge issues, quite frankly, I'm not gonna be concerned about them.
Mr. Chair.
Ms. Reed?
Um, has, does anybody on this board, like, over past forty Bs, has the, or any development in this town, has the Water District ever said, we don't have the capacity for that development? Would they ever say, no, we can't handle anymore right now? We have to build another pump station?
They're very proactive with drilling wells.
Peter, are they? To the mic.
They're they're very proactive with drilling wells.
I mean, yeah, cuz they just, they just did Trinity, which just recently opened within the last year or so. And that took quite a few years to get done.
Yeah, all right, just curious.
Yeah, and and to more directly answer Kay's question, and in all the forty Bs I've been involved with, uh it it's never been an issue. Water, water capacity has has never been an issue.
All right, thank you.
Just another, this is Clay with Eastland. Another quick point. Their connection fees are are pretty high compared to what we've seen in a few other towns. So we assume that they're pretty well-funded, and that's how they're able to, you know, be proactive about their kind of capacity considerations, so. I just felt that's worth, worth mentioning.
All right.
Before you, I've just gotta go grab the calendar.
Okay.
Cuz I know what you're gonna do next. Yes, so we can.
What is it, ten thirty?
We're not staying till midnight, are we?
Ten thirty, ten twenty-seven.
So we need some action.
We're wearing out the path of work.
A request. I think, if I may, Dan's point of, you know, uh bringing them in and asking them directly, and then beyond that, it would be to uh hire a hy- hydrologist, uh, you know, to do, I think I would like to see that. I would like to have some more you know, professional input on it.
Well, but I think we're talking two different issues. The this distribution and service issue is.
Right, uh that's not our issue, right. On to the next meeting? We have a meeting on the twenty-seventh, right?
And we have one scheduled for August seventeenth.
Wait, I don't have July twenty-seventh?
Yeah, next Thursday.
What's on August seventeen?
That's the new forty A I got in.
Oh, okay.
Last week, two weeks ago.
Yeah, okay.
July twenty-seventh is Viscose.
Yes, July twenty-seventh is Upton Street.
Yep. So, um, what what do we have next? We're, you know, we're talking about a a meeting for, you know, continuation. What what do we need to do? Uh I, and I think the answer to the question is, I think it's time that we should be diving into waivers, right? So I think we've talked about asking the Water District to come in. Um, you know, I I think as far as uh traffic and um as far as the track review goes, maybe we'll have something to talk about based on my conversations with the town administrator. As far as uh, you know, the site review um and engineering work that Jeff does, I think all the issues are resolved at this point. I don't know if there's open issues, so so I think that's done. Um, no, you know, the applicant may resubmit things. So in my mind, there's our last one, waivers, oh, architectural, they, there's new architectural drawings. I I think they wanted to present those tonight, and I think we're way over time.
We have a half hour.
Yeah, good night, guys. Tell me about it. Um, yeah, uh so, uh waivers, the new architecturals, a couple of things I already mentioned. So, I mean, that's what's on tap for the next meeting. Anything I've forgotten?
Yeah, follow up on traffic and water.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Traffic, water, fire. I'll follow up with fire. I still haven't received the sewer report from, uh, DPW, but I'll, I'll, I'll harass them one more time.
So, so I guess the question is, you know, how much time is needed?
It could be a conditional approval. I mean, I've asked them four times, like, maybe, maybe, maybe you guys can reach out.
I can reach out to Paul.
Yeah. I'm sure he's busy, so. I'm not, I'm not concerned with it, but it's nice for the file.
For, for our next meeting, I, it's, I don't think we necessarily need any chunk of time for somebody to prepare something, right, so we, we, we could meet in a couple of weeks if we wanted to, correct?
Well, it depends if you wanna get feedback from the traffic committee and anyone who's in town on.
Yeah, I mean, I, we, we don't know where that's gonna go, right, Dan? So, um, you know, well, let's give it three weeks, maybe, four weeks. Uh, you know, I, we, we do have, you know, the, the time sensitivities.
Where are we actually on the 180, 180?
Good question.
It ends on October 17th.
What, when did we open?
March.
March 23rd, was it?
Yeah, 20, it was 23rd.
March 23rd, we opened it, and then had to immediately continue it.
We stayed at Rappel. Right, and then it was stayed with the whole Safe Harbor appeal.
Yeah, then it was stayed for 30 days.
Yeah, it was, I think it might have been a little bit more.
It was, I think.
Yeah. Yeah. October 17th is what we have in our calendar.
October 17th.
That's your date. Did we confirm that, or is that?
I can double check tomorrow and send out an email. I'll have to just go back and count everything.
All right, so we do have a lot of time left, which is good. So I think we could continue for three or four weeks if we felt that was useful.
So, so three weeks would be August 10th. We already have something on the 17th. Katrina, is that one hearing, or is there multiple hearings here?
It's just one, right now. And it's, it's a 48 case, it's a special permit. It should be really quick.
So, uh, for you to advertise for that.
I, I have to get the legal notice to the Grafton News by next Thursday. By the 27th, to have it published on the 3rd and the 10th, for the 7th.
Anything, anything in the pipeline?
Not that I know of.
Yeah, so, so we could, maybe we just go for the 17th. And, and if something, if another 48 does come in in the next few days, too bad. You know, we, so we do a 48 on the 17th, uh, you know, at 7:00, and, you know, um, we'll do this right after. If all of us are available, or most of us are available on the 17th, let's go for it. That's, that's my suggestion.
I'm fine.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay.
So, next Thursday. Mr. Chair?
Make a motion.
I make a motion that we adjourn this meeting. Oh, no!
Whoa, 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 no, no, no.
Wait, you can't? Not yet. We first have to continue this hearing. Oh, sorry. Then you can do that.
Otherwise Katrina's gonna re-advertise.
Potentially worse than that.
You told me to make a motion. Well, yeah. Continue.
Bill, Bill's the traffic liaison.
All right, so, okay, a motion to, to continue this hearing and this hearing. From 8:92 to August 17th. At 7:00 PM. 7:00 PM.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion being seconded. A roll call vote. Uh, Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Ms. Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
Chairman votes yes. Yeah, now you can.
Now.
So, hang on, let's double, double check the agenda, make sure we haven't forgotten anything?
Yep.
Yeah, assuming we're doing that next time. Also, just please keep in mind that I am gone from September 8th to the 25th. Okay. Keep that, just, when we schedule our next meeting, we can do it the 7th. But anything that needs to get written will not get done, cuz I am lying out on the 8th. So, just wanted to keep you all up to date with that. Sorry. All right, I make a motion that we close this meeting.
Second.
Nathan seconded. Mr. McCusker?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Mr. Adams?
Yes.
Mr. Yeomans?
Yes.
The board votes yes.
You're not asking, but I say yes.